Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education's special meeting for Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carlin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olsted?
Here.
Peschall? Solaji?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Cartwright, I believe.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright.
Dr. Herzog?
Yes, Dr. Cartwright.
My apologies for the interruption.
No problem.
I am making a formal request for a board member in a second and a vote to change the order of our agenda for this evening. I am formally requesting that we move announcements to this point of our agenda before agenda-related public forum.
All right. Is there any objection to moving the announcements?
Someone needs to make a motion for that change, please.
Okay. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to use announcements earlier.
Second. Who was the second, please?
I think it was Carlin.
Carlin, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move the announcements up to this point in the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olsted?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Cartwright.
I appreciate him for clarification. I do believe that Mr. Peschall has joined us at this point. Thank you very much, Board, for allowing me to move announcements to an earlier stage of this. We just want to make sure that we get information out as quickly as possible to any of our attendees or anyone that may be watching this online. Tomorrow morning, we will be opening up the registration process again for our E-Academy program, previously that was closed earlier this week. However, after listening to our community and hearing concerns from many of our parents for requests for us to reopen that enrollment window until after the board meeting tonight and a decision has been made, we're honoring that request at this point in time and listening to what our community had requested of us. Therefore, tomorrow morning, E-Academy, the enrollment period, will reopen. However, what does need to be noted is for anyone who has already enrolled in the E-Academy program, as well as for anyone who may be enrolling between tomorrow and the close, please be aware that the window will close and final commitments must be made by 3:00 PM Central Standard Time Monday afternoon. That's August the 10th. So again, the window will open tomorrow, and anyone who's already enrolled but maybe hasn't made up their mind which way they would like to go, all final commitments must be completed by 3:00 PM Central Standard Time this coming Monday. One thing we do want to ask for people as they're watching this presentation, either online or here in person, is if you're one of those individuals who are thinking about enrolling or have enrolled in the E-Academy program, please be aware of the, be cognizant of the conversation that is going to occur tonight. We're going to go into great detail about the difference between E-Academy and online learning because there is a drastic difference between the two. What people need to understand, please, parents or family members or caregivers, if you have enrolled your student into the E-Academy program, that is a year-long commitment. In other words, and I'm talking school year, so this would be a decision that you're making for the 2020-2021 school year. Once you commit that you, this is the program that you want to participate in, you're in that program for the length of the school year. So that is my announcement. Dr. Herzog, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. I just have one clarification question. The deadline you said was Monday at 3:00. Is that Central Daylight Time or Central?
So sorry, Central.
Standard time.
Central, Central Time. Our time, our time zone. Central Standard Time.
That would be daylight time, because we're still on daylight savings. Okay?
3:00 this Monday.
Okay. 3:00 Monday. Whatever we call 3:00 on Monday, that's the deadline. Very good. Thank you so much. Are there any other announcements at this time? I have to apologize, I'm not used to being so close to this microphone and I feel like I'm filling up the whole space here and I don't mean to do that. All right, then we will move on to the agenda-related public forum, which is our next agenda item. And I have a statement to read before we launch into that, so we all are on the same page. If you have signed up to speak this evening, you have been provided with a number. If you have an even number, you will speak using the podium over there, on my right, your left, as you face the board. While those of you with odd numbers will use the podium over here, my left, your right. We have a total of six people who have lined up, so if you pay attention to your number, we'll be able to accommodate each of you in an efficient manner. We ask that you get no closer to one another than the X's on the floor to allow for social or physical distancing. Please advance as each person moves forward to speak and exit through the main aisle once you have spoken. I will periodically call numbers and ask that people line up so that we can keep this process moving to accommodate each of you. Please remember to keep your face covering appropriately over your mouth and nose as you speak. When addressing the board, we always ask for a couple of things. One, your name and address and the agenda topic. Tonight, we're also asking that you start by giving us your number. So your number, your name, your address, and the agenda topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group or individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. And please limit your comments to the time allotted. We have historically throughout this year and in previous years used three minutes as the timeframe. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to speak before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage in debate with the board. Due to the number of people present and the board wanting to provide opportunities for all points of view to be heard in a reasonable amount of time, if there is a group present that is expressing the same points, you might consider not repeating what has been heard and that will give you more time to speak with new points. It is requested you highlight your point quickly to allow all speakers an opportunity to present within a reasonable time period. We, as a school district and as a member of this community, adopted a set of guidelines for operation called the Civility Principle. UW-Oshkosh is a major partner in this, the Oshkosh Northwestern and the Oshkosh School District. Our very own Lynda Pieron, Director of Special Education, has been part of their steering committee. We ask that in order to bring civility to a topic that we know is very near and dear to the hearts of many people, those here tonight and those not, that one, we pay attention; two, we listen; three, we be inclusive; four, not gossip; five, show respect; six, be agreeable; seven, apologize; eight, give constructive criticism; and finally, nine, take responsibility. So with that, I will call on the first speaker, and that would be Michelle Hernke.
Just give me one second. I'm going to give you my time. What I will do is I will give you one second. So you can.
Thank you. In my excitement to come here tonight, our first board meeting together since March, I left my telephone at home. And I wanted to be able to give the speakers a heads-up when they were down to 30 seconds so that we're all good with that. But Dr. Cartwright's going to help me out tonight. So thank you, Michelle, for your patience.
So I am number one today?
Yes, you are.
My name is Michelle Shelley Hernke. I reside at 6779 South Highway 45 in Oshkosh. I am a 19-year OESD veteran special education teacher. I'm also the Oshkosh Education Association Legislative Impact Chair, so it would be remiss in my duties in that chair, in that particular role, if I did not ask everyone to make sure they go out and vote for the Heroes Act so that we can get funding for our school districts. That being said, we are at a unique moment in history and we are all worried about how to move forward. We have watched others recently try to pave the way, only to be stopped in their tracks. Schools are different. We are a living organism. We do not operate in a bubble. When this all began in March, we all had two days to change to 100% virtual. Everyone stepped up. Teachers stepped up, and we proved that we were able to do online teaching successfully. Staff members stepped up to feed kids and their families, make sure that members, make sure that families received connections needed for online learning, and that students had what they needed to meet academic expectations. But this plan, the proposed plan, I appreciate that the plan includes flexibility for moving between models, but I believe it is not safe for staff or students. I think the chaos that would be created by starting in-person and then moving back to online would create a traumatic transition, much like the one we had in March, that will, would not be felt as strongly as we started virtually and then when it was safe, came back to in-person. When the question has been posed to administration, how do we shut back down, that's a difficult thing to think about. Think about that craziness in March and all of the issues that arose as a result of shutting down. The hybrid plan is confusing to many and will still leave many families struggling to make education work for their kids. Any individual school closing would add to that confusion. The chaos that will be created by staff instability due to our subsituation will only add to the daily disorder. 67% of the parents surveyed, that's included in the plan, are not concerned with childcare. Over 200 students have already enrolled in the E-Academy, which seems to be a great option for an orderly, consistent education at this point. However, it leaves the rest of the students at the mercy of confusing plans, chaotic and unstable environments that may shift or have major transitions at any moment. If we could make a commitment to the safety of all stakeholders now, then we could spend this last four weeks planning. If we could focus all of our resources on developing sustainable and equitable remote learning practices, then we would have-
10 seconds.
-we would have our best shot at providing a safe and consistent education for all students. Students would be in the hands of highly qualified educators. If we knew tomorrow that school would be resuming remotely-
Stop. Thank you.
-we could begin to make solid, equitable plans to ensure all students have supplies, devices, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, next we have Sharon Wagner. I'm not sure if she's a placeholder, as she's indicated here, or in the on-deck circle, using a baseball analogy, will be James Warren. He's number three. So Sharon, we need your number, your name, your address, and the topic you're here to share with us.
I'm number two. My name is Sharon Wagner and I live at 4103 Oregon Street in Oshkosh. Yeah, and I'm wondering how I'm going to do this. That's good. Hoping we get microphones in the classroom. Okay. I, first of all, realize it's a terrible decision that people need to make right now and I want you to know that as a teacher, I'm going to do my best to meet the students' needs wherever and whatever decision you come up with. That being said, I'm hoping you will consider some of these and maybe you already have. The large number of elementary students we have in our room, like I'm looking around right here, last year I had 25 kids in my room and I'm assuming these are six feet apart. That concerns me. I don't know how, maybe you've already done it in the classroom. I personally would rather have the kids split up and perhaps do half the kids on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the other half on Tuesday, Thursday, with my kids at home zooming, maybe watching what I'm doing in the class or doing something online, just so that we're all involved. I'm concerned about the necessary containers that we might need for math manipulatives and hoping that those will be provided for us and also some time to get those organized. Wondering if teachers and administrators in our buildings will be supported if a student is not following the guidelines, if we are able to send them to the office, if the parents will be called and blah, 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 instead of just sending them back to the classroom. I'm also wondering about accommodations made to teachers who don't have time to finish the work in school and many of us take our stuff home. I'm just learning and trying to wrap my head around how is that going to work, bringing all that notebooks or whatever home with me every night? If there's going to be maybe some deadlines that are pushed out or some more prep time somewhere so that we don't have to bring it to our houses? I'm also concerned about bringing additional germs home, especially, I have elderly parents that I try to help out with. And this might sound silly, but if we could look at possibly dress codes, being relaxed a little in that to provide for daily washing every day, I know people are saying, "Take your shoes off, wash your clothes right away." And as far as I'm concerned, the most important aspect of school is providing a safe and respectful place for students to learn. I thank you for your consideration and I know that you will do what you think is best for our collective children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next is James Warren. And following James will be Alicia Herman.
All right, thank you, James Warren. I live at 1285 Wheatfield Way here in Oshkosh. You said you wanted a phone number?
No, it's not necessary unless you want to.
Okay. Just follow the rules.
I know.
And I am speaking on behalf of the Oshkosh Education Association, just so everyone is aware of that. You know, just speaking to the Board at first, of course, we know we've had many tough decisions over the years. Of course, this one is going to go right to the top of the list to start things off. As teachers, we know that teaching in-person is the best way to teach and for students to learn. But of course, as you're looking around the room, you know, things are not how they are usually, how they usually are. Things, we're in a different society right now. So of course, we have to adapt to that. The committee work came out, and we do appreciate the work that the administration did. One of the, one of the models that came out of that was middle school and high school would be on, two days, off one day and two days on. That is what OEA would agree to or believes that would be the best model for those students, if we would be in-person at all. Appleton, I'm sure you've heard, Appleton and Fodalec have already moved towards that model. So that's something that we would like to have looked at. Of course, we've known for a while the three different choices, right? In-person, the hybrid, or online. So that's where we are today. And of course, we know safety is the most important thing here. Going back to, I'm sure a lot of you have heard, it's gone viral now, the Green Bay's school board president's message. And that's pretty much how OEA feels about it as well. We feel that if there would be one student, one paraprofessional-
30 seconds, please.
-one custodian, if anything serious would happen, that would not, we would not want that. Of course, our survey information, we just took a survey on teachers, 70% of our teachers felt that the school year should start online and 21% believed it should start as a hybrid model. We just did that survey last week.
10 seconds.
I would like to thank the administration for all the work they've done, but as an organization, we believe that the school year should begin online and all the work we've done could be done later. We could use that information and models later down when things are safer. So thank you for your time.
And next is Alicia Herman.
Hello?
Hello?
Number four. My name is Alicia Herman and I live at 501 Congress Avenue. I am here, I emailed our school board members, and I appreciate you, I know I wasn't expecting anybody to respond, but I appreciate the people who did and I know that you have a very difficult decision to make. I'm thinking about the safety of our staff members and our students. I'm a mom of a six and 11-year-old. And true story, last week, we're in the car and I told Sonia, my daughter, I said, "Hey, just want to let you know, you know, there's a safe downstairs, right? And that's where all the important papers are, right?" And she's like, "Yeah." And I said, "I need to let you know where the safe key is." And she said, "Why?" And I said, "Well, you know what? I just don't know how things have been going the past four or five months. You know, if anything were to happen, I know that you are 11 and this is a big burden to bear, but I need you to know where things are to get those to grandpa and to get those to your dad. This is the time we're living in and I'm, I've been anxious for the past two months. I'm thinking about going back to school. I want to teach. I miss my kids so much. I've been on Google meets, phone calls with my students, with their parents. But I am scared to death to think that we're going back to school in person with the pandemic. You know, when we closed in March, it was hotspots across the United States. And now it's a pandemic after seeing the way that certain people are handling this situation, the numbers, everything. You all know that. What scares me is we haven't been in-person since March and going five days full-on, going right in scares me because, one, we have not shared germs in months and now we're expecting little kids, little kids who have never walked into a school, some have never walked into a school, to follow these rules, to listen to people with masks and do this, do that, do this, do that. And that scares me. I'm scared for my staff members, I'm scared for my colleagues, I'm scared for myself, I'm scared for my own children because all it takes is one, you know? And one is too many. And that, we, as a district, have done an amazing job. We are one-to-one K-12, thank you very much. And I want to thank our IT, Dave, Dr. Gunlock has headed that. We have great tech coaches. We have the capability to start Model Four, not forever. We could start online, watch the numbers. We're watching people in the south, we're watching other school districts try and open. We have the capability to start virtually and then go to a hybrid model and then eventually go to Model Two, Model One. We talk about it all the time, we need to be fluid because we have no idea what each day brings. But I do, I'm concerned that it's just, it's crazy to think that we'd go full five days K-5 and risk our staff and our teachers and our students and their families. We have a plan. We have lots of plans and I know that our exec team, we met with them yesterday, they are talking, they are working out things and I know that we can do this.
15 seconds.
But I strongly urge you to consider at least starting the year Model Four virtually and just, and keep us all safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Next is Stephen, I'm not sure the last name, Hilger.
Hilger.
Hilger, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Hilger. My address is 130 West Wisconsin Avenue and that's in Nina, Wisconsin. And I'm also the fourth and fifth grade teacher here at Alps. So as teachers, we know that the most important thing to learning is feeling safe in the classroom, but the reality is going to school is going to be the most dangerous thing that these kids do during their day. All we need to do is look down to the south right now in Georgia. You know, you have in-service with teachers, 260 staff are in quarantine in the first day. You know, we have elementary students that are testing positive in Georgia right now. So all these myths that it's not going to, you know, pass with younger students, they're not true, you know? It is going to be a tremendous risk that we face. And all layers of government, from the federal to the state of Wisconsin, to Winnebago County, to the city of Oshkosh, have all failed us. They have all failed to implement any meaningful policy to prevent COVID-19. It's clear in Wisconsin that the bars are a higher priority than schools. And honestly, I think this summer break was probably one of the worst things for this virus because we could just go on with normal life instead of actually dealing with opening up schools and reaching that goal and achieving the Badger Bounce Back Plan, which is the science, that is the science of the virus that we need to be following, not just throwing out the window. Now, teachers are being pushed to return and in-person teaching when it is clear that the virus is more out of control than during the stay-at-home order. Students and teachers' lives, as well as the lives of every family member, will be at risk for sickness and death each day that we go to school. This is unacceptable. Schools are hotbeds for spreading illnesses. According to the World Health Organization, the place for the greatest danger for COVID-19 is a crowded indoor space with poor ventilation. That's the description of my classroom, as well as classrooms across the district. And Dr. Fauci says, you know, schools are in his top 10 most dangerous places to get the virus. We know that social distancing is unnatural for all people, especially children. The district's plan to allow for children to have recess and lunch without masks and social distancing effectively guarantees that an infected student will pass the virus to others. The science is clear that children can serve as conduits for the virus as effectively as adults. The danger is compounded because COVID-19, as we know, is passed asymptomatic, making it impossible to know until the threat is already in our classroom.
30 seconds, please.
Essentially, I just urge you to go to online learning to start the year. We have lots of districts in Wisconsin that are doing this. You look at the southern half of the state, practically all of them are starting virtual learning and that's because they, they know that that's the safe way to go. I mean, is it worth a student dying? Is it worth a staff member dying? And the answer, we all know, is no. So I urge you to start online. Thank you.
Thank you. And number six, last but not least, is Michael Stromberg.
Hi, I'm Michael Stromberg. I live at 216 West 14th Avenue and I'm a little reluctant to come in today because social distancing, and I think you guys are doing a great job trying to keep people separated and that's awesome. You guys are going to have a lot easier chance doing that here than you will with actual kids. And I don't know if you noticed, but I sit all the way over there because more separation is better. We have a ton more cases now here in Wisconsin than when we decided to shut down. What has changed that makes it safer now? There's more COVID-19 cases and I don't understand the logic between why we'd open up in-person now when we are, have so much worse than we had before. We have seen multiple examples of schools that have opened up and immediately closed down. We've also seen examples of multiple summer camps with kids and counselors and hundreds of kids being infected. Some people have said kids aren't affected. That's not true. Kids are affected. And some people say, "Well, kids have a very low risk of dying." That might be true, but it's not zero. It's absolutely not zero. And just because the kids have a low risk of dying, that doesn't mean their teachers have a low risk of dying. Doesn't mean the custodians have a low risk of dying or the food service people or their parents or grandparents who the kids also have to go home to. We can all agree that in-person without COVID-19 is probably the best school model we've been able to come up with over the past hundreds of years. That's not an option. We can go back to school, but it's not going to be like school without COVID-19. There's going to be drastic restrictions. School at some point in somewhere, some classroom is going to close when a student gets tested positive. There's going to be major, major, major disruptions throughout that process. Right now, if we- Right now, if we made a commitment to going online, we would have a plan and that plan could be followed without major disruptions when things happen because things will happen. It's just a matter of time. And I would like to strongly encourage that at this point in time, we look at starting with the online model simply because that's the safest thing for our kids. And that's also the safest for our teachers, the parents, and everybody who works in these buildings. And that's something we really need to be, it's more important than anything. We can catch up a kid on their education. If somebody dies, they're dead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. That brings us to the end of the public forum tonight. And so, we will move on to our one and only workshop item, which is the Oshkosh Area School District 2020-2021 School Year Plan presented by the executive team. Dr. Cartwright and friends, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name's Dr. Andrew Jones and I'm the Executive Director of Administration for the district. To my right is Julie Mosher, Director of Construction, and to my left is Mr. Matt Kamert, Director of Student Services. And I'll be hopefully this screen. Did it work here? There we go. As we're before you tonight, we want to reflect on our commitments that we've made. The first one is to safety. The student-staff safety is our top priority. Our plans will reflect guidance from the CDC, the state, and the Winnebago County Health Department, which I'm happy to say that they've joined us here tonight as well. All our plans have been reviewed by the county health department as well. Flexibility, we understand that the predicament that we're all in here as educators is going to require us to be very flexible because the COVID-19 data and information changes quite frequently. And so, we're going to have to be very flexible and keeping that in mind. We also have to keep in mind the staff, the students, the parents, the capacity along with the financial resources of the district as well, trying to be stewards of all of those. And our most important thing is learning. Plans need to reflect a return to, our plan is going to reflect a return to face-to-face classroom learning with a focus on creating conditions to safely reopen schools. Instructional models include hybrid and virtual learning options for PK through 12 when needed. The proposed OSD 2021 school year plans allow for schools to move between instructional models ranging from face-to-face through virtual as needed. We feel some background information is important for you to know how did we get here. So, the OSD district formed seven different committees with a cross-section of staff to get input and insight for the planning of the 2021 school year. In July, the Department of Public Instruction provided several plans for us to use as templates. We did review those. The Oshkosh district sent out a staff survey as well as a parent survey to gain insights from all groups. The district also has been in consultation, as mentioned already, with the Winnebago County Health Department on the plans. The administrative team reviewed the updated CDC recommendations as they apply to schools. And the Oshkosh Area School District Executive Team compiled all information and formed four instructional models to be used to respond to the fluid nature of COVID-19. We'd like to start with the staff survey results. 972 staff responded, which is a very high response rate. And I want to note, just for this presentation, we're only trying to put in the questions that we thought were pertinent to the presentation. There are other questions that were asked of staff, but we feel these are the most pertinent ones. As already mentioned by one of our speakers this morning or this afternoon, safety and health risks, if you looked at the concerned and highly concerned, they're up to 79% if you combine those two. Cleaning and disinfecting practices, again, about the same. A pretty consistent instrument of safety protocols, again, roughly about that same margin. And unknown factors regarding the job, again, we're all in about the 70%, 70% range, mid-70s. Switching over to our parent survey results, I want to be very clear with people. We had 4,218 parents respond. Not all completed the survey. And so, we do have some different numbers at times. For the questions that we have presented to you, 2,593 parents and guardians responded to the questions that I'm going to go through. What it represents in students is about, the 4,218 parents represent about 7,000 students, which is about 70% of our district. The first question that we feel is relevant, would they send their preschool or elementary school child back to school? 83% said yes. Would they send their middle or high school back? 85%. Would they send their child on a bus that may not allow for social distancing? And that was 63%. More information about our parent survey. As we looked at the elementary level only, only the elementary level, the preferred educational delivery method is all learning at school would be 65%. All learning conducted remotely, 20%, and other answers comprised the other 15%. At the middle level, the preferred educational delivery method, all learning at school, 43%. Day one in class and day two hybrid in real-time was 19%. Day one in class and day two with a prerecorded lesson, in other words, the teacher recorded the lesson that was played back to them, 14%. All learning conducted remotely was 16%, and other made up 8%. At the high school level, day one classes and day two class, hybrid in real-time, 44% of the parents preferred that. Day one in class and day two with a prerecorded lesson, 31%. All learning conducted remotely, 13%, and others methods were 12%. Again, more parent data. The public health guidance being followed, it's very, very interesting to see what this represent is almost an even split from no concern to highly concerned. And you'll see the data kind of shares that at times. Classrooms with other student gathering places that are properly disinfected, again, about the same proportion of an even split across the four answers. Readjustment to classroom school life, we saw no concern or slight concern with about 65% of our parents. And childcare, if a child is not in school, there was no concern at 67% and highly concerned at 15%. So, this is some of the data that we had reviewed. As I told you, we did include a cross-section of our entire Oshkosh Area School District and they were formed into seven committees. The first committee was managing physical spaces. The second one was operations and healthy environments. The third committee was operations, day-to-day procedures. The fourth committee was transportation. The fifth, the instructional models we might use. The sixth one was flexible and responsible staffing, knowing that we're going to have issues in that area. And lastly, a response to COVID-19 symptoms and/or an exposure plan. This is what who made up. Each committee had peer professionals, teachers, support staff, union leadership from inside the district, as well as a cross-section of principals from each school level was on every one of the seven committees. Committees reviewed each area and made suggestions that were forwarded to the Oshkosh Area School District Executive Team for review. The entire OSD administrative team made final revisions at the end of July. This included the executive team and all the principals. The recommendations that you're about to see are going to be presented to you tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie to start talking about some of the instructional models that we reviewed. Julie?
Thank you. One of the seven committees was looking at instructional models because we know our primary mission within the Oshkosh Area School District is making sure that our students are college, career, and community-ready and that they're learning. And so, what are those models going to look like? So, we took that and we first looked at Model One, number one, which is our traditional in-person learning is what we would think of as traditional school. And then, we started to look at, we are going to have to make modifications. And so, each of these models are designed and we're going to go into depth with each of these so that you understand how they are modified and how we can move between the models depending on what our needs are for our school communities and for our classrooms. So, Model Number Two is modified in-person learning. So, we are in-person five days a week, but with safety precautions and everything from the work of the committees taken into account. Model Three will refer to that as hybrid learning and that is a mix of in-person and virtual learning. It's reducing, the goal of hybrid model is to reduce the capacity or the number of students within a building or in a classroom. And it's every other day with one day in-person and one day the next day the student is working virtually from home. Model Four, virtual learning, all learning takes place remotely or we call it on our learning management system for grades six through 12, it would be via Canvas. And for students in elementary school, it would be Google Classroom. But please keep in mind that our buildings, unlike when we were at the safer-at-home order, our buildings can be open and we can utilize our buildings if we need to transition to Model Four. And outside of all of this, and I'll go more in-depth, with E-Academy is our 100% virtual school. E-Academy is fully virtual all year long, a totally different platform. And yes, we needed pre-enrollment so that we could start to predict how many students and families that we could serve. And we will go more into E-Academy in the next slides with details. So, let's take a closer look at each of the models. So, Model One and Two is in-person learning. So, going back to Model Number One, it's what we think of, things are back to normal and we're at school, right? None of our proposals are saying we need to be back in school as quote-unquote "normal." So, let's look at Model Number Two, modified in-person learning. Students are at school for the full amount of time, but all of the protocols that are in place with guidance and from the work of the seven committees are in place. Instruction is going to look and feel normal, if we can call it that, but the classroom is spread out and will look and function a bit differently, but we have students face-to-face. Groups of students, especially in the elementary school underneath this modified in-person learning, stay together like in their school families. We often call that like cohorting, right? Keeping them together as a group as they move like throughout the day or through their instruction. Hybrid learning, the model is where students come to school. The way that we are proposing in the Oshkosh Area School District is every other day. We call this an AB schedule as students are face-to-face with their teachers on one day and then the next day they are remote or working virtually via Canvas, their Chromebook, their laptop, et cetera. The AB schedule has students going Monday, Wednesday, Friday the first week or Tuesday, Thursday. When we get further into the presentation, I will show you, we have developed an AB calendar so that whether a student is high school, middle school, or elementary and we choose to use the hybrid, we have the AB rotation set up. And we also have it set up so that students in the same family would be in the same grouping, like A group, B group. With that, I wish we had a better name than like AB group, but sometimes that's just the best organizational way. Student attendance will absolutely be taken virtually when they are working from home to make sure that we are keeping up with classes, that we're keeping tabs on kids, et cetera. And Model Four would be virtual learning or sometimes we're calling it remote learning. With Model Four, students are at home or in a different location. They are not at school. They are receiving their instruction through their Chromebook, their learning management system at their particular level, Canvas, Google Classroom, and other apps. Staff send and receive their instruction and students absolutely submit work, will have due dates, et cetera. But we are not doing face-to-face instruction. That doesn't mean that we're not doing instruction where the teacher is in contact with the student, where there are things maybe synchronous or asynchronous. That's those fancy words that we're throwing out there. Synchronous means that you're doing in real-time, working with the teacher. You're meeting as a classroom in real-time. And asynchronous means you may be watching a prerecorded lesson, video, et cetera. And they can be accessed at any time. Student attendance, once again, will be taken virtually when they are working from home to make sure at whatever level a student is at, we are keeping track of where they are. And so, the last option that we're going to talk about, which is very, which is very different and we have been doing at the high school since 2010-11 through E-Academy, but we have not done it up to this point for middle school and elementary. Actually, introducing elementary E-Academy was out in the 21-22 of our strategic plan. So, when we are offering E-Academy here, knowing what the needs of our families and our parents are demanding from us or asking of us, we are rolling this out in a very shortened timeline. So, keep that in mind. So, with the OSD E-Academy, it's 100% online, year-long, virtual learning. And in that E-Academy platform, the platform or what we call a learning management system is not Canvas and it's not Google Classroom. It's a platform called Buzz. And within that, that platform, the curriculum that's in there and is specifically the elementary curriculum, it is designed from the beginning to be delivered 100% virtually. It's not like we did the spring when we did at-home learning where, as many of our speakers said, our educators did an excellent job of transitioning from their traditional face-to-face learning and putting that out into a virtual environment. With E-Academy, the curriculum has been designed from the beginning to be delivered, assessed, and work with that child, with that student virtually. K-12 families were given that option to enroll because we need to reserve space and seats within that E-Academy. We needed to know, what does that look like? What are our families asking of us? What is student enrollment going to look like? And we need to have educators to be able to do that because our E-Academy, especially with our elementary, is delivered by all Oshkosh Area School District certified teachers. As we get into our middle school and our high school, E-Academy can, it's mostly our Oshkosh Area School District teachers, but we're also part of the Wisconsin e-School Network. And so, they may be taking courses from educators in other parts of the state, just like we currently have educators at our high school that bring in students from other parts of the state via Wisconsin e-School Network. When families choose this option and students are enrolled, we are asking them to commit for the entire year and especially at the elementary level because the curriculum- because the curriculum, once again, is designed to be virtual. It's not our Bridges math curriculum. It's not our Hawkins literacy curriculum. It's absolutely Common Core State Standards, Next Generation Science Standards, aligned with our new social studies standards that were approved. Those are all aligned, but because it's designed to be virtual, it's not the same curriculum. We'll end up in the same places at the end of the school year, but the alignment is not exactly there. So we're asking that if a student or a family elects to go into E-Academy, and especially at elementary, that we're asking for that commitment for the year so that we don't have that disruption or any gaps when it comes in learning. Students track back to their home school if you go into E-Academy. So if you are a student at, let's say, Tipler and you sign up for E-Academy, you're still a Tipler student, your classroom is now that virtual E-Academy classroom. And once again, this option is not the same as at-home learning and it's not the same as model four of virtual learning because our models one, two, three, four are designed for us to transition between the four of them at any given time. So model four is really taking our in-person learning, our current curriculum, and adjusting it and we are doing professional development around that to be ready for that. And that's coming to move into that virtual environment. So it is, it is not the same. So if we did, if the board so chose to start virtually, start in model four, model four and E-Academy are not the same thing. They are two separate pieces. So when you look at this side-by-side, some of the things that I described within the instructional model, you can see where learning takes place. Are there protocols and restrictions in place? Yes. And then what does instruction look like going through those, going through those models?
Thank you, Julie. We have some recommendations that we'd like to go over at each level. At the elementary level, we're recommending a model two, which is a modified in-person learning. Students attend school face-to-face five days a week with social distancing and other safety protocols in place. After-school programs, including lighted schoolhouse, will be offered with the same safety protocols in place as the school has during the regular school day. The rationale for this decision, at the elementary level, it is easier to keep students together as a group most of the day, as Julie mentioned cohorts. The district realizes that elementary children need supervision and cannot stay at home alone during the day unsupervised. And there was a study done from the CDC showing that the elementary students are less likely to transmit the virus than older students could. That leads us to the middle-level recommendation. At the middle level, we're represent, we're recommending a model three, which is hybrid learning. Students attend school face-to-face every other day with social distancing and other safety protocols in place. Students will follow an A-B schedule. Again, after-school programs, including MELTH and the other CLCs, will be offered with the same safety protocols in place as during the school day. Our rationale for this, because of the schedule of the middle school and many classes a student can have, grouping of students or keeping a cohort is not possible like it is at the elementary level. By running an A-B schedule, reduce possible transmission by reducing the number of contacts each student staff member has in the building. Running an A-B schedule reduces the overall number of people in the building at any one time, making social distance, distancing easier. And again, as already stated, middle school students can pass the virus to others as easily as adults can, as outlined in the CDC article that we, we stated here. This age group typically will recover from the virus quickly. The studies show that older students, again, as I stated, are more likely to pass it. The high school level recommendation. At the high school, we're recommending a model three, which would be a hybrid learning. Students attend face-to-face, uh, school face-to-face every other day, as like at the middle school, with social distancing and other safety protocols in place. Students will follow an A-B schedule. Extracurriculars, including athletics, will be offered with the same and/or enhanced safety protocols as the school day. Safety protocols will be dependent on the activity, as well as guidelines from the WIAA, the Department of Public Instruction, CDC, and local organizations with oversight over youth activities. Our rationale for this decision, because of the high school schedule and many other classes a student can have, grouping, again, the cohort is not possible. By running an A-B schedule, we reduce possible transmission by reducing the number of contacts each student staff member has in the building. Running an A-B schedule reduces the overall number of people in the building at any one time, which makes social distancing easier. And again, the same study that we cited in the middle school is the same here, that this age group will typically recover and that they can pass the virus more easily than younger students. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Julie.
All right, so let's talk a little bit more about the A-B schedule because when we were talking about going hybrid and organizing, how are we going to organize approximately 10,000 students or high school students or middle school students or whatever level is going to go hybrid? How are we going to organize this? Make it predictable for families, make it predictable for attendance, and make it contiguous for learning. And so what we have here is a proposed A-B schedule. So all schools in the OSD, if we are on hybrid at a particular level, would follow the A-B schedule. So both middle school and high school right now, we're recommending to be on a model three hybrid schedule. So middle school and high school would follow this. If elementary went to model three, they would also be on the same A-B schedule. Students in the same household will be in the same A-B group. So we're here at Tipler, so if you are a family and you have a Tipler student and a West student, we will be organizing it that your Tipler, that your two children that are at two different levels, you are in the same group. If elementary goes hybrid at the same time and you have three children in three different levels, you would be in the same group, if that makes sense. Groups are set up to reduce and pull down the class or the school size by 50%. We've run five different trials on this, on how to make this work, and it does work. So we were a little amazed, but it works. And this can be utilized by all grade levels at any time as needed. And what's also about this calendar, if you notice, we've set up the A-B days all the way through the school year. So as we move in and out of models, if we were in model three and then need to shift to model four, we would pull, you, we would pull out of the A-B day, but let's say we have to shift back to model three. We pick the date that we start school and we pick up with the A-B rotation, if, I hope that makes sense. Or if we start in model four, we were in model two and we shift, we can go into this model and pick up with the day.
Is, is this model, is that one of the reasons that it's A-B versus the two on and one day off and then two on that Jim was talking about?
So when we were looking at this as a, as a team on how we were going to manage that, if you notice, within a school calendar, it doesn't always work out perfectly that you have a five-day week, right? To go AA, virtual, and then B, do you know what I'm saying, BB, that kind of thing? So there was that piece of it. How do we, how do we manage that? So it's predictable. The second piece of it is then making sure, how do we have that predictable in-person, like rotating through, like there's more face-to-face, you know, over time because when you're on that AA, BB, there you go almost like five days or five school days without possibly seeing your student face-to-face if we're in a model three, if, if that makes sense. So that was, that was part of the thinking behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Conrad, also, just a clarification. Where some of the districts were choosing to do an AA, Wednesday off, and BB, and the, the purpose on the Wednesday was in order to do deep cleaning and those, those kinds of things that were occurring. We've had extensive conversations with, I have personally, with exec team members, as well as with Jim Fox, to ensure, do, is there a need for us to be able to do that? And what has been relayed to me is that no, we, on a nightly basis, we feel as though we have the ability to appropriately clean our facilities between, you know, students that are, that are coming in. The other thing also to take in, I want to emphasize, I think is very important for us to emphasize, is the, the idea between cohort and non-cohort. Because when you're in a cohort segment, which is what you have in our elementary schools, you're able to keep your students together. So that becomes like an extended family, as you might say. And we've worked very closely with Winnebago Health Department on this because we know, candidly speaking, there are going to be times when our students are not going to be able to do the six feet apart. So what, what provisions will be put into place in order to have the, the best safety procedures as possible? We'll be talking about that here momentarily. But again, the, the concept being is in elementary school, you have the ability to keep your students grouped together. In middle school and high school, we do not have that ability. You in essence almost end up with seven different cohorts in, in one day because there are seven different periods, which in essence means you don't have a cohort. That is a significant difference. And again, with us, we're very concerned about the education of our students in addition to everything else that, that is occurring. And when we were looking at that and going, okay, we may have an AA and then there's five days before we see them again. A lot of our students struggled this past spring with the online learning and we recognized that. We recognized that many of our students, candidly speaking, in fact, if any of our secondary teachers are thinking about this, how many assignments did you get at the last minute versus ongoing, consistent all the way through? And it was a lot of that, the ability to be able to have that interaction with the students. It's not the teacher's fault, wasn't the student's fault. It was, it was a different environment that people were not used to. But overwhelmingly, the, the information that we heard from parents that were reaching out to us was, we need, they needed to have some type of consistency in order to help keep the students on pace. For our families that have the means, they have the ability to, many of our, those families will oftentimes will be able to either hire tutors. They have the ability to potentially, oh, I, 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 here's an app I know that will help my kid online. I can purchase it. And then give the, the app to the child, you know, via whatever technology that they may be using. So what ends up happening is your, your opportunity gap widens and then which causes your achievement gap to widen. Because those families who do not have those means and then are struggling and we're not having a lot of those interactions with our students in that manner, it becomes highly problematic. So that is, those are some of the main reasons why we looked and considered the A, alternating day schedule. It truly is student-driven, also understanding that we're putting in the safety precautions in order to keep our, our staff and our students as safe as possible. Ms. Conrad. Actually, I was going to turn it over to Ellie.
As already stated, the seven committees, their work is reflected in the document that parents and staff and the public has seen in our OSD 2021 school year plan. It's a, over a 30-page document that started at about 85 pages and we, we whittled it down to 30-some pages. I want to publicly thank all of the, the teachers, the support staff, the paraeducators, our custodians, our administrators, the executive team, and many others who all participated in this process. It was truly a, a, a group effort. Knowing that, again, being fully transparent, our teachers, when we talked to them yesterday, said, you know, just because we worked on it doesn't mean we were, we were promoting it, but they realized that their input was valuable. And so they did do that and we really appreciate all of the great work that these people did. It was some great insights that we got from this document and from all of our levels and different stakeholders in our organization. So this is the result of that work and again, they gave up their summertime, their vacation time. And I want to publicly acknowledge their great work and effort that went into this. We did take a lot of their ideas to heart and it is reflected in this document. So it is a draft. It will continue to be a draft for a little bit yet as we look at whatever your recommendations are going forward tonight and as we gain more insight into how we need to operate in a face-to-face environment. Lastly, I'd like to say that whatever model we choose, this work is very valuable. If the board so choose, so chose to go to a completely virtual model, when we do come back off of, off of virtual, we're going to have come to, have to come back to a face-to-face model. So this work, it's not a question of if we're going to use it, it's a question of when are we going to use it? I also need to say here, again, is that there's a very likelihood, as we all have realized, that COVID is very fluid and it changes sometimes by the week or even the day. It's very likely that the models that have been presented, that we might not, I don't think people should get into just saying one or the other. It is very likely we could, we could go from a face-to-face, we could go to virtual, we could go back to face-to-face, we could go down to level three and back up. So we may, again, we don't know what we're going to be facing in the future. No one can predict that. But we could be using multiple models and I think we want to, that's the, what we started the presentation talking about, the flexibility piece. So I want everybody to keep in mind that we're not talking about concrete decisions. We're talking about being very fluid and the models that Julie has outlined allow us to go in and out of those models. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kammer. So Matt?
And while they're transitioning, again, I just want to echo Dr. Jones in our gratitude for several of you even in this room and, but all of our teachers, our para-professionals, our custodians, our maintenance workers, our administrators. And I'd also like to thank my executive team in the design of this because there was a lot of work with that. And then we even have individuals outside of our organization that partnered very closely with us. So we're very appreciative of many of the health officials that gave us advisement on this. The Winnebago County Health Department, we're very appreciative. Cobason and the conversations that we had on how, how are we going to work this out with transportation? So I just want to make sure that we, we're giving recognition to all of these absolutely amazing individuals in order to present this information to you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Curry.
Good evening. As a part of the plan that these committees put together, there are a number of things that the district will be doing to try to make our school environments as safe as possible for students as they return. So given the nature of how COVID-19 is transmitted, we know that ventilation of our buildings is going to be more important than ever. So in order to ensure that our buildings are properly ventilated to the greatest extent possible, there are a couple of things that we're going to be doing, including as closely as we possibly can following the guidance of the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers. So as a part of that, our air distribution equipment will be using special filters that are designed to filter out as much as possible the virus and those are called MERV-13. In addition to that, we're going to be maximizing the outside, outdoor airflow into our buildings. Now, that might have to be regulated some when we have extremely hot or extremely cold days, but to the greatest, greatest extent possible, we want as much of that outdoor airflow as we possibly can get. So in addition to that, in terms of the, the surface transmission protocols that we're going to be putting in place, we're going to be doing a number of things to really enhance the cleaning protocols that we have in the district. So as a part of that, we're going to be disinfecting as much as we possibly can, including So as a part of that, we're going to be disinfecting as much as we possibly can, including after each class at the secondary level. Each classroom across the district is going to be supplied with disinfectant, so they will be equipped to do so. And then there are going to be deep cleanings that take place in all of our buildings each evening, and that'll be done by our custodial staff, and they're really going to be focusing on disinfecting and more safety-oriented tasks than anything else for those deep cleanings. As a part of the plan, we really want to make sure that we're, we're limiting access to spaces as much as we possibly can. But in that same breath, we understand that there are inevitably going to be some shared spaces within our schools. And to the greatest extent possible, we're going to thoroughly disinfect in between each use of those shared spaces. And again, if there are shared objects, shared supplies in our schools, between uses, they would be thoroughly disinfected. If they can't be, they would be quarantined for at least 72 hours between uses. In terms of the, the common areas, there's a, a plan in place that addresses not only district-wide practices but also elementary and secondary, given that those two environments look a little bit different. So from a district-wide standpoint, every effort's going to be made to ensure social distancing in all environments. So in classrooms where we can, desks will be placed at least six feet apart. When we're able to, if the classroom has table seating, trying to sit students as far apart as possible. Now, as Dr. Cartwright mentioned, there inevitably are going to be instances where six feet is not possible, whether it be in a classroom or outside the classroom. So in terms of seating, if it isn't possible to, to maintain that six feet of social distance, we're going to have barriers available that students can use at their seating area. In addition to that, I already mentioned we're going to limit seating options as much as we possibly can, so students are going to have assigned seating. And the reason for that, obviously, is we, we don't want, the, the more access that, that we provide for various spaces across the school, the, the greater likelihood that a transmission could occur. So the more we can limit that, the more we can assign seating, the safer it'll be. In terms of bathrooms, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is having a max capacity for each restroom. Now, in order to do that, we may have to close off urinals in the, the boys bathrooms or sinks if they are placed very closely together. That will hopefully help create more distance between people using those facilities, and it'll also limit the number of individuals that will be able to use those facilities at once. So there should be no more people within those areas than there are spaces for them to use. And then another thing that you're going to be hearing about here shortly is regulating the use of, of drinking fountains. So they will be used to, to fill water bottles or, or containers only, they will not be used for drinking. So going on from there, in terms of elementary-specific things that we're going to be doing, at the elementary level, most of our classrooms have safe spots. So these are areas that students can go to take a break from, from whatever is going on in the classroom, and they're used quite regularly during the school year. And in order to continue that usage, but also make it as safe as possible, there are a number of things that we're going to have to do with our safe spots, including removing rugs or carpets or other objects that cannot be easily disinfected. And then in between uses, as, as well as we possibly can, we're going to have to disinfect those areas. So the only thing that's left in those areas should be things that we can quickly and easily disinfect. In terms of library, media center, other common areas in our elementary schools, we want to try to limit the number of students who have access to these areas at the same time. We're also going to do our best to, to stress the importance of hand hygiene for all of our students, so making sure whenever possible, they're washing their hands, and we're going to be teaching them proper hand washing techniques, but also utilizing our sanitation stations, which all will be equipped with hand sanitizer. We're also going to have visuals in place for our elementary students to help them internalize what social distancing looks like, what six feet looks like. It's easier for our, our older students to really internalize what six feet means, but for our elementary students, they're, they're probably going to need some help with that. So whenever possible, using visuals, whether that sticky tape on the floor or, or other things that we have available to us. In terms of playground use, maintaining social distancing will continue to be important outside. And again, those are things that are going to be reinforced. There may be designated areas for certain groups of students on the playground, so we're not all congregating in the same area. And again, with hand hygiene, students are going to be expected to wash their hands or use sanitizer, hand sanitizer both before and after recess. And then the equipment that's used at recess, we're going to be limiting the sharing of that equipment as much as possible. You'll notice some, some general themes at the secondary level. In terms of common areas like science labs, some of the things that we're going to be doing at the secondary level include, again, limiting shared equipment, disinfecting as much as possible, and then reinforcing social distance. In terms of locker rooms, we're going to use locker rooms as little as we possibly can. So if it's not necessary to use our locker rooms for gym class, we're not going to do it. Understanding that if athletics are on as scheduled, some of those students will need to access our locker rooms, but in doing so, trying to make them as safe as possible by spacing students out, so maybe using every other locker, only letting so many students in the locker room at a time. So those are things that will have to be put in place if and when our locker rooms are used. In terms of the media center at the high school level, again, access to the media center will be limited. Rather than searching for books physically present in the media center, there are ways for our students to reserve books online, and that's something we will be utilizing. Our media specialists will be doing book talks, so if there are, are new or exciting books or general media that may be interest, of interest to students, they will be doing talks to, to help pique interest and let students know where they can get those books. And then anytime a book is checked out, upon return, that book will be quarantined for a minimum of 72 hours. So other safeguards that we're going to be doing across the board, again, reinforcing hand washing techniques, we're going to teach those to students at all levels, what's appropriate, there's going to be signage everywhere, reinforcing that as well, the use of our sanitation stations and hand sanitizer, and then really modifying our building layouts and traffic patterns to, to make them work and to ensure safety as much as possible. So the traffic patterns that we'll use will, will hopefully avoid congestion in our hallways, they'll ensure social distancing, and really hopefully reduce the, the overall possibility for transmission in those areas. In terms of face coverings, the mandate that recently came out by the state of Wisconsin requires that face coverings are used in all indoor spaces, and that will be no different for our district. In terms of mask breaks, there are opportunities where students may be able to remove their mask if they are outdoors, or when eating and drinking, and that is something that is consistent with the mandate that came out from the state of Wisconsin. Social distancing, like I said, will be expected all times in all environments, and our, our teachers are really going to work to reinforce that social distancing, we're going to be using visuals as much as possible. And one of the other things that we're going to be utilizing are PBIS lessons. So our PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, and that's a way of, of, that we've been using this district for quite a number of years to teach and reinforce proper behaviors in our students. So given that most of what we're talking about are, are related to behavioral expectations, PBIS will be utilized to help teach these things. I mentioned before, material sharing will be limited as much as possible. We're also going to be restricting visitors in our schools to the greatest extent possible, and you'll hear more about that here shortly. Lockers will be restricted at the high school level. Students will be allowed to carry their backpacks from class to class, but lockers promote congestion in our schools and make it more likely that students are going to be in close quarters. And we also want to make sure that we are avoiding any sort of large group activity. So this could include assemblies, celebrations. For the time being, we're going to avoid those. So any, any adult, which includes staff members or visitors who enter our building, will go through a health screening. And what that will include is not only a, a temperature screen, but also some daily health questions that are, that are asked to, to these individuals that really revolve around the symptoms that are consistent with COVID-19, and whether or not they've recently been in contact with anybody who's tested positive for COVID-19. Students will not be subjected to the health screenings, however, we will ask parents to be aware of the signs and symptoms of COVID-19 and to do temperature checks on their children each day before school. The only time students will have their temperature checked is if they are demonstrating symptoms at school. In that case, part of our screening protocol will be to pull the students down, and they will be assessed by our health staff, and that will include a, a temperature. We talked a little bit about face covering, so again, they'll be required in all indoor One of the other pieces, we, we understand that especially on really hot days, face coverings become very, very uncomfortable for students and staff members. So being that that is a great concern of ours, and, and a number of our facilities don't have air conditioning, anytime that there's a heat index outside of 90 degrees or more, the district is going to release students halfway through the day, students and staff. Just because, like I said, we, we know how, how difficult it can be to learn when you're uncomfortable, and it can be very uncomfortable in those situations. And not only will our schools that don't have air conditioning be released early on those days, but our schools with air conditioning will be as well in order to maintain consistency across the district. Our committees also came up with some safety guidelines for, for managing physical spaces. So as a part of that, we're going to be installing physical barriers in a number of places in our buildings. So one of the places where these are going to be targeted is our office areas, particularly our front office where we have visitors, others from the public coming into our schools on a regular basis, interacting with our clerical staff or other people who may be in the office. Along with that, those individuals see a wide variety of students and staff on a daily basis, so there needs to be some sort of physical barrier between them and those who they're interacting with on a regular basis. Another area that we're going to be targeting are serving lines in the cafeteria, and this will primarily be so our, our food isn't, isn't, doesn't become contaminated as students move through the serving lines. In addition to that, our health office waiting areas are going to be equipped with barriers that separate students who may be waiting to see the health assistant. Most of our health offices are a part of the main office, so sometimes the main office waiting area is the same thing as the, the health office waiting area, so that's, makes it even more important that we have some sort of way to separate individuals who are sitting and waiting to be seen. And given the size of some of our offices, there's not really a way to keep six feet in between those seats, so a physical barrier is going to be necessary in those environments. And then finally, as I mentioned before, when social distancing is not possible in the classroom, physical student barriers will be available, and those will also be available in our lunchrooms when students have their masks off to eat lunch or breakfast.
Thank you, Matt. And again, as you mentioned, some of these already, the food services in cafeteria. Throughout the district, we're going to standardize as much as possible our new safety protocols. Cash will not be allowed in the food service line, pre-wrapped in disposable plasticware will be used. Matt mentioned the Plexiglas already, sanitation stations, and there will be no self-service items, so students don't cross-contaminate other students. Students and staff practices, again, the big thing that the CDC and others have told us is that there cannot be any food sharing. Students cannot share parts of their lunch, so, and again, no self-service will be available. Other things happening in the, in the cafeteria, we'll have modified eating spaces depending on the school level and the cafeteria setup. At the high school and other levels, I can tell you that additional lunch periods have been added. It depends on the school, but many, many of our schools have added another lunch period. This will reduce the number of kids in the lunchroom and, and make social distancing easier, easier. Pre-practice breakfast, breakfasts are served in elementary classrooms, not in the lunchroom. Hot meals will be available for lunch. We'll have a modified milk delivery for, at the elementary level, where students get their milk at break. Modified fresh fruit and vegetable program and a modified after-school and light house, schoolhouse programs as well. A lot of the meals available for secondary students will be grab-and-go type. And this will be applicable to when we're doing, if, if we're doing the every-other-day model, students can pick up their lunch before they leave for the next day, so that will be available. Okay, our safety guidelines and the day-to-day procedures, again, as already stated, but here to be crystal clear, visitors will be highly limited. We'll have established protocols for visitors if they do have to come in the building. We'll have safe return to classroom practices such as modified material handling procedures that Matt's outlined already. Limited cohort interactions, our student checkout procedures modified, our school safety protocols and drills will still be in place, but they will be modified. Fire drills are required by state law, and we've talked with the fire marshal here at Oshkarsh, and we've come to agreement how we can modify our drills, so drills will still go in place. Those things are still in place. And then, as Matt and others have already mentioned, our recess procedures will be modified. Transportation. We've worked with Cobusen, and, and we'll be having two students per seat. The goal is to have 48 students on the bus, on a normal 72-passenger bus. As Julie has mentioned with the schedule, but also with transportation here, siblings and, and will, and households will sit together on the bus, this will limit exposure. There will be assigned student seating, and this will help if there is a, a outbreak, that we can do contact tracing to see who is near those people at that time. Visibly, students, six students will not be transported, and we're asking parents to be at the bus stop in case there's a, a student who, who's not feeling well. Again, as we outlined, we want people to keep them home. Face coverings will be required on the bus, the bus windows will be down when possible to, for more ventilation. Hand sanitizer will be available on the bus, and there'll be no eating or drinking on the bus. We'll have modified expectations for students with disabilities, and many times when we have students in, in those routes, we have adults also helping out and people chaperoning them on the bus ride, so many times that happens as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Matt.
So in terms of staffing, staffing may end up being one of the greater challenges we have as we return to school. We know pre-pandemic, subs were in short supply, and we, we're not anticipating that's going to be any different. So a lot of what we do coverage-wise will have to be done internally. So the district has had a internal coverage flow chart that, that was created a number of years ago for situations like these, but ultimately, it's going to be all hands-on-deck approach for individuals in terms of helping to cover our classrooms. Along with that, we have emergency response protocols in place for both staff and students, and we're going to get into those here shortly. So in terms of classroom response, one of the things that we have set up in the district or will have set up is an internal response team. And these teams are made up of individuals who may have availability at times throughout the school day that can help respond when needed. in terms of some of the roles that, that these individuals will take on, it, it could be things such as escorting students from the classroom to the health office area when they have symptoms of an illness, could be retrieving student materials who are down in the health office area, could be taking over a classroom for a teacher who is demonstrating symptoms of an illness. So really, there's a, a variety of roles that these individuals could take on. So really, there's a variety of roles that these individuals could take on. So in addition to being individuals that may have time during the school day in order to take on the role, we'd also want to avoid individuals that may have pre-existing health conditions or other things that would put them in a high-risk category. In terms of our classroom response, we have a very detailed response plan. So anytime we observe symptoms or a student mentions that they're having symptoms related to COVID-19, the first step would be to inform the office. Someone would then escort the student to the health office waiting area, where they would be screened by health staff. Parents would then be contacted, and then we would isolate any areas that the student had access during the school day, so they could be sanitized. So our custodial staff would be immediately contacted so they could help with the sanitization efforts, and then our health staff would provide guidance to parents upon them coming to pick up their child. When we have a staff member who experiences symptoms at school, the first step will again be to inform the office, who then can work with our internal response team to find coverage for that teacher. In the meantime, that teacher would expect it, be expected to maintain as much distance from others as possible, at least six feet, hopefully more. When the staff member arrives to take over the class, that staff member would immediately leave the building. Along with that, we'd want to isolate any areas accessed by the teacher and have those areas, again, disinfected. There's a possibility in these cases, if there's a room available, we'd want to move the students out of that classroom so proper disinfecting can take place. In terms of our isolation rooms, anytime a student meets criteria to be isolated, there are going to be places within our our buildings, most likely near our health office, where we can do so. So that process would begin with an assessment by our health staff. If it is determined that a student should be isolated, we would clear the isolation room immediately, and the health staff member would make sure that they have appropriate PPE on for isolation. They would then escort the student into the room while we wait for that student's parent to come pick them up. In the meantime, that student will would be monitored from outside the health room or from outside the isolation room. Once the parent arrives, we would escort the student to the exit. Parent would not be allowed in the building at that time, and then we would sanitize and disinfect that isolation room. So there are some criteria that we've laid out for when students would be isolated, so this would include cases where students have a persistent cough or sneeze, students who have a fever plus two additional symptoms that are a part of COVID, and then if a student has symptoms and we know that they had been in contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19. Now, through our contact, through the health department's contact tracing process, chances are if a student had been in contact with someone who tested positive, they'd be self-quarantined. But there is a possibility where they may have been in the vicinity of somebody and didn't meet that threshold for self-quarantining, and in that case, if they're demonstrating symptoms, we'd want to know and get them isolated as quickly as possible. In terms of sending student home, students home, the first step would be to contact the parents to come pick their child up, and the parent, again, must wait at the entrance for their child to be escorted out. We would notify the office that the student is going home so they can make the proper adjustments to attendance. We'd have somebody collect student belongings and monitor the student until the parent arrives. Again, the parent would be provided with guidance, including recommendations to contact their child's physician, the health department, and then provided with a best estimate of the timeline of when they can return. Oh, I think I missed a spot here. In terms of the the family notification for exposure, anytime there is a student or staff member who tests positive for COVID-19 in our school, there will be notification that goes out to parents, but that information is going to be limited in not providing anything that could allow someone to identify who the individual is. So really, the the standard communication that comes out is going to be very general. It's not going to identify grade level or anything like that. Again, just so the expectation isn't that you're going to know whether or not your child was in that individual's class. Again, because of FERPA and HIPAA and the laws that go along with that, we have to be very discreet in terms of providing that information. Once we know there's a positive case in the school, the first step that we would take would be to contact the Winnebago County Health Department to consult with them and also to make sure they're aware. We would immediately start a contact tracing process on our end where any student or any staff member we know has been exposed, and that would include being within six feet of that individual for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more would be sent home at that point until they could be provided with further guidance from the health department. And again, we would follow up with them throughout this process. So that's that's really what the contact tracing for the district would entail.
Okay, some frequently asked questions. What if I don't want to wear a face mask? For the safety of everyone involved, we're asking and requiring that people wear their face masks and follow the rules in the handbook. All students would be subject to progressive discipline, as outlined in the student handbook, for not following these guidelines. This would include all discipline, and we would hope that that everyone could understand why we're doing this, we're trying to protect everyone. As parents and visitors also may be denied for not following the rules that are identified in the handbook as well as the Board of Education policies. One of the common questions, do staff have to follow the same rules for face coverings? And the answer is, yes, they do. Will the district use other plans outlined in this presentation in the future? And again, I talked about this possibly. As COVID-19 changes or increases and decreases, the district will consult with the county health department, the Oshkosh Area Board of Education, and will use the best plan for the situation that the community and the district is facing at that time. Julie covered this a little bit, but just a reminder is attendance required for students and how will attendance be taken for my child? Yes, attendance is going to be required both for in-person and virtual, even if they're on an AB schedule. So with that, Julie?
So the key in all of this is being able to communicate, because when things change, we know we need to be good communicators, and you know the rules with communication, right? That if you've communicated it 10 times, communicate it 10 times more, right? So with this, we have established on our website a dedicated school year plan webpage, and so please visit our webpage for the latest updates when it comes to the school plan. And the handbook that Andy and Matt are referencing within our presentation is a draft of that is out there and available at this time. Email, phone, and text messages. Our families and staff will receive email, phone, or text messages through the Infinite Campus Parent Portal page, so as you've done your online registration, and if at any time you don't like how you're receiving phone, email, or text messages, please update your preferences inside the parent portal page so that we can communicate with you in the way that you prefer. Ensure your contact, and this is where, ensure your contact information and communication preferences are up to date, because we want to make sure that we're in contact with you. So I think this is still me. Looking ahead, so last week, the proposed plan was released. We are currently right now at our special board meeting to discuss these plans. August 7th, we would like to have whatever, pending our decisions from the school board tonight, we would have our final school year guide shared with the OASD families and staff on August 7th, out and available. And then pending what the plans are that are voted on tonight, we really want to get our, the child's teacher's school, their schedule, and everything shared, because everyone is very anxious right now to know what is September 1st going to look like and how can we start to plan, because we are ready to welcome back our children, our teens, our staff, in whatever model is going to be decided on tonight. Oh, I'll keep going here. So in summary, our administrative recommendation is for elementary school to Model 2, which is the modified in-person learning, so five days a week face-to-face with the modifications in place that Matt outlined during the presentation, and that's also in our handbook. Middle school and high school, Model 3, which is hybrid learning, so that would be placing our middle school and high school students in A group and B group and following that every-other-day face-to-face instruction the next day, virtual, online.
And with that, we're ready to answer any questions from the Board of Education that we can answer. Again, thank you. It's a very lengthy presentation, but we wanted to be very thorough with both the Board and our community on what we're trying to propose here and doing something that's never been done before. Questions we can answer from the Board?
And just a direction real quick for the Board members, for your knowledge, we do have representatives here tonight from the Winnebago County Health Department, so if you have any of those type of questions, to direct them to them. We also have a representative from Cobuson Transportation. We also ensured that we have available Jim Fox, so if you want to look at that from the custodian perspective. And then if anything related to like food services and those those things, we also have Drew Nihans, who would be able to communicate on behalf of Michelle Stammen. So I just wanted to make sure that you have the availability of full staff and and our partners.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright.
Okay, I do have a question relating to the Health Department, if I can go first?
Yes, you may, Mr. Evans.
From what Dr. Jones is saying, the Health Department is going to kind of have the last final call on this. I'm just wondering, are there any metrics or goals that we need to meet to go into part-time virtual or part-time on?
What we're trying to do is provide as much information so we can make really informed decisions moving forward. I think it would be, it'd be a mistake to try to set some specific metrics in place at this time, just because the situation's so fluid. So the the tools that we're offering for the school district and for us to use to help us decide when we need to make further decisions are a weekly report that is set up just for school districts. We're providing information about case rates, trends of cases that are in the school district footprint. We're also providing information by age group of students that are in school and then trending that information over time so that you can kind of see, you know, where students are at in terms of the the burden of illness within the community. That report can be used with a few other reports that the Health Department has out. Obviously, our our daily information, which, you know, we don't ask people to react to too quickly, but we also have two other weekly reports. One's just a general weekly report about the status of COVID in the community, and then another is is split up by municipality. So between those three, there's a fair amount of information weekly that really gives us a sense of where this community's at. In addition to those tools, we do what we call a syndromic surveillance with schools in Winnebago County. We have daily reporting from each of the schools where we track absences and we track illnesses and by type. And so what we ask for all the schools to do is provide information about the nature of absences and then whether it's a GI illness or a respiratory illness. And we've been doing that for years, and so we have, you know, baseline information that we can reflect on, and we've made decisions in the past with school districts, you know, about what to do when we have a sudden increase in cases. You know, a good example would be, you know, a big increase in gastrointestinal illnesses and, you know, a suspect norovirus outbreak, and, you know, we can make a recommendation about perhaps what, you know, what classrooms or what grades or what schools are most impacted and, you know, what what would it take to help stop that that spread? And oftentimes, it's a recommendation of, you know, just, you know, adding an extra day onto a weekend to increase the time and and stop the spread of disease, and that's often very effective. So we have that tool that we haven't really used in a situation like this before, but really is in place and is a great secondary tool for us to take a look at and and monitor where things are at. And then, you know, thirdly, you know, we would really be dependent upon the knowledge that is within the schools themselves. You know, what are the, what is the situation within those schools? Let's say we have an increase in cases. You know, where are those cases distributed? Are they in a single classroom or a single grade or in a single building? What, what's the, what about teachers? We're, you know, we're tracking kids, you know, what's the status with with teacher illnesses? And then there's going to be other factors that, you know, we can't even predict yet or that aren't related to the burden, you know, of COVID in students. Perhaps it's, you know, it's teacher capacity or some other outside factor that has an influence on what our recommendations might be. And so between those tools, we really want to help set up, you know, guideposts or opportunities to say, okay, this has changed in in the Oshkosh Area School District. It's an opportunity for us to take a closer look and then and then decide. I think, you know, for us, the most important thing for the school district is, is going to be the ability to be flexible and be able to move, you know, from different phases in order to do the best they can to help protect the health of students. Our goal ultimately is just going to be to minimize spread of COVID, you know, when we see it in the schools. And there's no doubt that we're going to see COVID, but how do we minimize transmission and, you know, maintain the best education that you can?
I have a question maybe there, too. I have concern about the data that says K through 5 kids do not transfer COVID. And I know that's from the CDC, and it looks like it was based on some, a study or research from Korea. And there's also some CDC data that says children over 2 should wear masks. And so I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that data, because we've seen a lot of other data that suggests they can transfer COVID.
Yeah, I think it's a really good point that, you know, this is a situation where we're learning all the time, and as new data comes out, we try to translate that into into practice the best way we can. You know, we're aware that those studies have shown for the younger kids that perhaps there is less transmission. There's other studies that show that they have a pretty high viral load as well. So I think, you know, we need to stay on top of the science and integrate that science into in our decisions, you know, as it becomes more available. I mean, masking is a perfect example. You know, we, we started this outbreak, this pandemic, and we were really that much about masking, but then, you know, we learned things about, you know, how much transmission there is before somebody shows symptoms and and how infectious people are before they develop symptoms if they do, and and it turns out that masking is really effective when we thought it wouldn't be. And so we're going to learn a lot more yet, and and we'll continue to to share that information and integrate it into the plans that the school district has.
Well, my other concern related to that would be that the teachers in elementary schools would still be interacting with other teachers, so what is, even if the K through 5 don't spread COVID, they could still be putting themselves at risk with other teachers that they may not have been quarantined with and everything. How big a risk do you think that is?
Yeah, it's a similar situation that most employers face. You know, most employers are, you know, want to protect their workforce, but they really don't have a lot of say in, you know, what happens when they're not at work. And so by by having protective measures in place, you know, the masking, the distancing, those are all things that are designed to, you know, limit spread. And and that's, you know, that's really the best we can do right now. We know that we're going to have cases, you know, in our community, we're going to have them in our schools, and and so what do we do to minimize the transmission before we identify that that case is actually there, if we even know it's there, because it could be an asymptomatic infection?
Thank you.
Mrs. Slajic, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I also have questions for the Health Department. And first, I just want to tell you that I am very grateful that you are here, because I have been reading about COVID and trying to be informed, but I am not an expert, and that makes me feel ill-equipped to make this decision, but I recognize that you are an expert, and especially that you know so much about what's going on at our local level. that you know so much about what's going on at our local level. So I'm going to rely very heavily on your answers here for my own decision. If you could just help me rate the risk of a few different activities, that would be helpful. I don't know if we need to come up with how we'll quantify what the risks are. I know in your document, you have, what is it? It's low, moderate, moderately high, and high. Suppose we could use those if you're comfortable with that. But, um, so what's the risk of being in a room with masks on with fewer than 12 people?
It would, you know, there's a number of factors there. You know, what's the distance? What's the activity that people are engaged in? What's the ventilation like? So, you know, those are, those are all important considerations.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So let's say they're able to be about six feet apart, and they're only in the room together for about an hour.
Yeah, I would consider if, you know, if students are studying and are maintaining, are staying in their seats, and they're at least six feet apart and they're wearing masks, that, you know, that's a, I would say a moderately low risk.
Okay, that's kind of what I expected. Thank you. I just, I've been reading this, but I just want to hear it from a real expert. So what about being outside without a mask, big open space, 50 to about 50 people? I don't know.
If there's socially distance, you know, it's a low, that would be a low-risk situation.
Okay. So what about when there's 25 people together in a room and spacing only allows for about two feet between people, but they are wearing masks? Does that increase the risk?
Yeah. You know, the distance, you know, the greater the distance, the better. You know, there's, there's, you know, some of the studies show, you know, that you can have, you know, a positive impact, you know, at two feet or three feet, at a single meter, it's better if you can go further, which is why we maintain a six-foot spacing. You know, if people are within two feet of one another and someone's infectious and, you know, and they're there together for an hour, you know, there's going to be a moderately high risk there.
So thank you. You brought up my point about being there together for an hour. If they're together in that space for seven hours, does the increase go up or does it stay the same? I'm wondering. I've read things that say the time of exposure makes a difference. I'm wondering if that's true.
Yeah, I would consider a combination of time and exposure or time and distance to be continuous. So, I mean, we wouldn't, we would say that seven hours is, would be more hazardous than when one hour.
Thank you. I have wanted to know if I was right about my gut on that one. So then my final question, and this is specific just to some spaces we have in a couple of our elementary schools. They are considered open concept classrooms. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But space is about the size of this auditor, of this gymnasium, maybe like to the hall, maybe from that wall to the hall. I don't know exact footage. Maybe somebody else does. But what if we have 150 people in that space together with masks, but there's not classroom walls? There's just partitions. Does that increase the risk to have more people in a space about this size?
You know, there's a lot of variables there. I mean, you know, are these, you know, what's the volume of air in the room? Is there really high ceiling like this? Does it have the kind of ventilation this room has, which seems to be pretty good? You know, those are all things that would help. And certainly, what, you know, what's the, what is the ability to distance? What is, what's the activity that's occurring? You know, 150 people in this room is a lot of people in this room.
Yeah, it is. So thank you for answering those questions for me. That helps me a little. And just to give an idea of why I asked those questions, it's, oh, sorry, I'm looking through my notes. It's because I do feel comfortable with our high school and middle school options that we've been presented, because I do believe that kids will be able to be six feet apart and that they'll only be together for an hour. So if someone in that room's exposed, maybe they'll have a couple of classes with that kid, but they're not going to be with that kid for seven hours. What I have struggled with is our elementary plan to be on Model Two. And because it's more kids, it's, they're exposed to each other for a longer amount of time. And because like what Ms. Carlin got at, I, even if they are less likely to spread it, I just don't know how perfectly accurate that information that we have right now is. So I don't know. That's, I guess, just to my fellow Board members, that's what I've been struggling with the last few days. I'm always open to new information to change my mind. That's one of the things I admire about science is that when you, like you said to Ms. Carlin, when you get new information, you readjust. So I'm open to new information, but currently, that is my concern, I guess. So thank you for answering those questions.
Are there other questions for Mr. Geren, Mrs. Carlin?
I have a question on page, on slide 38. You referred to some V O E policies. Do we have a policy on masks yet?
On what stuff specifically?
Uh, it was slide?
Thirty-eight, you said?
And you mentioned some policies and?
Yes, we do have a visitor policy as well. There are visitor policies in the, in the...
Oh, okay, but we don't have a policy yet about mask usage?
About masks and face coverings? No, we do not. That's why this will be in, once the decisions have been made by the Board, we'll finalize the handbook and then we will make sure it's in every student handbook and everything that it's attached. So everybody has equal access to that, and that will also allow us to enforce those things as well.
Okay. And is it correct that we are in elementary schools? We are leaving it to the teachers to let the children take off their masks if they want, or are we going with the governor's mandate and everyone wears a mask all the time?
We have, we have to follow the governor's mandate on that. However, there are appropriate times for which we understand for elementary-age children, it's a little bit more difficult oftentimes to wear masking. So that's where you use appropriate breaking within, within their, that's allowable under the governor's order. So for example, we have snack time in elementary school that occurs every day. That is an appropriate time when the mask can be removed. But also to remind the Board, which is important, because it also goes back to one of the questions that you had asked, Ms. Salagi, is even when they may be closer than six feet apart, that is when we're using the dividers as well in order to minimize any type of spread. So that way, if they're eating lunch or eating a snack or something, the mask is off. That also helps with giving some type of protection for our students. And I wanted to go back also on your first question, Ms. Carlin, if I may, related to, you know, policy and those type of things. If the Board approves the plan this evening, then at that, in essence, at that point in time, you have given it, that is, that's the way we go forward with it. This is based upon legal advisement. You don't necessarily have to write it into a formal policy, but because it is included in the plan, it is enforceable.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And Stephanie, if I may, just to be totally transparent to everyone in the room and to anybody that's watching, when we put this presentation together, we put it out about a week ago, and the governor had not ordered the face masks yet.
Right, that's...
For transparency for everyone, we didn't want to change the presentation to say that, you know, we were misleading or doing something. So we left the presentation as is, and that's why it's that way. So just a clarification.
And, oh, I'm sorry, if I may, also, just, just a reminder is that the governor's order currently is through September 28. By us having it within our, if the Board approves it, it would go beyond September 28 until the conditions are appropriate for us not to have to wear face masking.
Got it. And I apologize for this next question, because I know it's in here somewhere, but we know 80% of parents want their kids to go back to school. What is the percentage of teachers that want to go back to school? Did we survey that? I can't, I know it's somewhere here, but I can't find it.
I would, well, I can look it up for you very quickly. It's in the beginning of the presentation, and...
That specific question I do not believe was asked from our staff. We were more looking towards what are the areas of concern so that we could try to really ensure that we reinforce those areas and provide, and try to push up. We would have a better gauge of where the heightened level of areas of concern so that we can appropriately address those areas for our staff members.
Okay.
So those were the kind of things. However, as you're, one can infer from the results. What we have is we have a staff that is extremely nervous and scared about coming back in person. So those, those are things that you can definitely infer, especially when you have a majority of your, your results and every area having a majority of highly concerned or concerned.
Stephanie, just again to follow up on that, again, the survey is pretty consistent with the staff and a generalization of the data, I'm going to put an asterisk there, it would be about somewhere between 75 and the 75% range. They're pretty consistent about that. When you say concerned and highly concerned, putting those two together, I would say approximately 75%. They're pretty consistent through the questions.
Okay. And then I have one more concern, and then I want my other Board members to ask their questions.
Mrs. Carlin, could you speak into the microphone? It's really hard to hear on this side. I think it helps.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
My other question has to do with, in some of our older schools, where the rooms are really small, we heard from a teacher that said it's impossible for her to really get them, you know, the proper distancing with the configuration in her classroom. How are we addressing that?
Okay, I think Matt had mentioned that in his presentation, but the answer would be, we would be using protective barriers when that social distancing cannot be, cannot be completed or realized. There's, it's a trifold plastic, you know, the science, science things, but it's made of plexiglass. The other thing is transportable, so we could also use it at lunch if we need to. Students can put it on their arm and put it on their table at lunchtime, too, when they have to take their masks off when they're a little more susceptible.
I got it, yeah.
So we try to put something in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
But they're all still going to be in the same second grade room or first grade or whatever for the entire day?
Most of the day, yes.
Okay. I guess my main concern is in that scenario, how do you maintain distancing with these kids?
There are some rooms that it is, it's, it's possible to do. You would probably and are doing, removing furniture at times. So to make the room, I mean, we can't make the walls bigger, but we, inside, we can make some of the space bigger. It is absolutely accurate that some rooms can do that, and at the same time, there are some rooms that we cannot. When we cannot, then we just go back to the previous answer.
Okay, thank you.
So just to note, I see in our packet that the district's planning on purchasing 4,500 of those individual student barriers?
I believe, Drew, are we up to 9,000 now? Or Matt, was it 9,000?
Yep.
It's accelerated. We're up to 9,000 units that we're purchasing of those, those barrier protective barriers, 9,000, noting that, noting that we have 10,000 students.
Yeah, so we're at nearly 9,000 for 4K through 12. With that being said, we can always adjust that if needed, if we end up needing more. One of the hard things is, is you're preparing to make a purchase like that in such a short amount of time. We didn't have time to go into every classroom or every space in our school and then really analyze, you know, where we need them, where we don't. We thought the individual barriers would be better in that regard than trying to fit every one of our tables in the district with some sort of semi-permanent plexiglass design. This way, students can take them with them. And then hopefully, once this all passes, it could be repurposed for like study carols or something like that. But again, the estimated amount that we needed was reflected in the purchase request. But if we end up needing more, then we're going to have to go forward and purchase more.
But that's another one of my concerns, is that we're buying 9,000 of these, and worst-case scenario, we start school, everybody's there, massive COVID outbreak, and then we have to quarantine again. And we bought, just bought 9,000 barriers.
And the reminder on that, Ms. Carlin, would be also recognize, let's say that we do end up having to go into a virtual environment. At some point in time, we're going to be coming back face-to-face. So it's not as though you wouldn't be, and we would want to do that in a phased approach. So you would be utilizing them there as well. In addition to that, I've had exhaustive, I've had good, deep conversations with staff because these particular barriers that we're looking to purchase, we're doing intentionally because we're looking at how can we repurpose them in the future?
Okay.
And use them for a different reason if, if and when needed.
Okay.
Other questions or comments, Mrs. Carlin?
I have another question for the Department of Public Health. Sorry for the musical chairs here. I, I'm not sure if you guys do this, but I was wondering if you're tracking anything in terms of the mental health of our kids since they have been at home for nearly six months. Do you guys do that?
We don't have any, any metrics at the Health Department. It's something that we're certainly keenly aware of as, as this situation continues, among others. And we do, we do work with the New Mental Health Connection, Tri-County Mental Health Group. I actually sat on the board with them. And we certainly try to integrate messaging with our COVID daily situation reports and with social media, trying to address many of the challenges that, that our community is facing related to that.
What are you hearing from the New Mental Health Connection in terms of the impact that this has had on kids?
Um, I don't know if I have data specific for kids. You know, we know that substance of use is up. We know that suicide attempts are up. You know, we know that people are definitely feeling more isolated and less optimistic. And so we know there's been a number of consequences. I don't, I don't have anything off the top of my head just for, for kids.
Okay. I'll share with you, because I talked to the Executive Director of New Mental, the New Mental Health Connections, and she said, quote, that she's been taking a really close look at mental health crisis and suicide-related behaviors and overdoses since the start of the pandemic. So from what I understand from her, she's trying to like just corral all of the data, you know, police stations and hospitals and everything, and county corners and getting it all together. She said, "The data sets are imperfect, however, that they're seeing an enormous uptick in considering slash planning suicide and ideation across all age groups. The combined risk factors of uncertainty, economic insecurity, and isolation are weighing heavy on our community." And then she shares a bunch of numbers, and I won't go into that. But I was wondering, you know, what your thoughts are on that?
It's definitely a reality. I think, you know, it's a, it's a balance that I think the school district has to take into account in terms of, you know, the, the physical health and mental health of students and deciding, you know, how to bring them back and what's going to work best for them. So, you know, we'll, we'll continue to learn. We're certainly hoping, hoping that, you know, the increase, you know, in, in social activities for kids will, will help with that. Until this is over, it's not going to go away. And, and unfortunately, now with the IRBS not being, being conducted, you know, this year, we're going to, we'll have a little gap in, in that data and have to rely on some other, other sources to, to monitor this further.
Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment?
Do we have any idea how many of our students just kind of dropped off last semester for in-home learning?
Good question.
Well, I guess the question would be, what's the definition of dropped off with at-home learning? So we definitely tracked our login or engagement rate into like our learning management platforms. And that range, like our lowest, I believe, was like 86% to a high of like 94, 95% like login rate. But that doesn't account for submission of work and interaction with like at-home learning. So we learned a lot during our spring at-home learning on what to do, what not to do. Keep in mind that we, when we went into spring at-home learning, we thought we were going into this for two weeks, not 53 days of school, not counting weekends. And so that was... And so that was, um, that was quite the challenge that our educators, our families, and a lot of our students really rose to. But it was hard because it wasn't predictable and it wasn't, we didn't ha- we didn't have as much time as we wanted to plan for. Going into Model Four for this school year, for like we transitioned into a virtual Model Four, we've learned a lot and we're going to apply a lot of that learning from the spring, such as having attendance or check-in taken every single day if we're like in a virtual environment, making sure that we have supports in place and that there are submissions, there's deadlines, there's pacing. We've modified like our lesson planning or curriculum to be very much ready to go like in a virtual or remote. Um, for example, at the secondary level, um, especially at high school, because we know credits count towards graduation, um, and we're in the Canvas platform, we're getting ready to launch our Canvas course or Canvas two point O that goes into what are your effective practices when teaching and learning in a face-to-face blended hybrid and all the way to one hundred percent virtual within that? What are those strategies? What are those relationship-building pieces? What is the student engagement? And how how do we have, um, tech equity is the new term? How do you have technology accessibility and equity when you're in those types of learning environments? So what we are planning for is to have a much higher engagement rate than we did during the spring because we're taking what we learned and we're applying that to our, to the fall when we're, when and if we go into Model Four of our plan. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, and you're very good, Julie, 'cause you also answered the next question I was going to ask, which is, how's it gonna look different this year?
Yeah.
If I, if I may make a, um, just one comment before we run out of time. Again, I thank everyone for the length of the presentation. I I apologize. But I I I need to tell you that when we read the parent comments from the survey and the teacher comments, many, many of them, many, many of them said, "This is, we do not envy you. This is a very, very difficult decision." I can tell you, there's been vigorous debate amongst all of us on on what's the best thing to do. Um, we're doing our best, but in the end, uh, we're educators. We are teachers. We're educators. We're gonna be standing right next to to you in in the building. We're going to be working alongside everybody, whatever the decision it is. But I I need to underscore, this was not an easy decision by any stretch of the imagination and was very difficult. And and again, uh, there's so much divisiveness right now in this country that we need to be one and and be be together. And again, it's going to probably fluctuate. Um, the model, I can almost guarantee it, as as COVID goes up or down, we are going to be moving between models. The last thought I wanna tell you is that, you know, I think the Health Department said that, you know, people are looking for measures or triggers. When would we go to the next plan? And looking for for statistics. We're not going to need statistics for that. Um, it's going to become a a teacher problem. When people get exposed and have to go into quarantine, we are going to run out of staff. Um, and again, that's exacerbated by the pool of substitute teachers we have, or generally retired educators. They're not coming in. Now, I shouldn't say they are not, but many are not would be more appropriate. Many will not come back to to work. But in the end, again, whatever your decision is, we'll respect it. Again, uh, it's not an easy decision for the board to make, 'cause we have struggled with it as well. I want everybody to know in the district and the community, um, this is, this has been a a real challenge. And we've tried to give you, our job is to give you the options. Your job is to to tell us which one we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Jones. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have a lot of questions, like always.
Okay. Um, I had Mrs. Olstead.
Thank you. Um, I have quite a few questions here that I've got them all in a bunch of notebooks because I've been researching this for days and days, weeks. Um, one of my first questions was, is how, what is the average size of our classrooms? And then in coherent to that is what is our, what will our cohort class levels look like? How many students on average are we putting in these classrooms?
Um, sure. So, and Dave, help help me if I'm, uh, off on this. So for K through two, I believe, our class sizes are one to twenty-two or one to twenty-four? One, one to twenty-four unless we're AGR, which is one to eighteen.
So we're looking at class sizes of eighteen to twenty-four students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, then going, going up to upper elementary, we then go up to one to twenty-seven. And, um, at the secondary level, we try to be at a one to twenty-seven, but reality is that we do have class sizes of one to thirty. It's okay.
Okay. And how big is our average class sizes in the elementary level across the district?
You mean like square footage?
The sizes, yes.
Several of them are at twenty-four. I mean, but then there's other classrooms that are really small. So it it really does depend on the school and it also depends if it's an AGR school or not.
Right.
So our AGR schools, sometimes you can have a class size as small as eleven or twelve.
I'm asking about the square footage. How big square footage is a classroom? I'm sorry, Kim.
I'm going to ask Jim Fox to come up here and talk about that.
Mr. Fox, can you come forward? While we're doing that, Julie, you wanna just talk about the elementary enrollment at E-Academy real quickly? It's relevant.
Sure, sure. So, um, I actually was waiting to have those numbers.
I know that we have E-Academy, and I know right now we have five hundred thirty-seven students in E-Academy at the elementary level that have went to E-Academy. I do know that out of our students, um, but the students, so I know these numbers might, you know, obviously be construed, you know, eighteen to twenty-four. They might go down because we do have a larger number of students that did apply to go to Academy. So that's why I'm just kind of asking for the average sizes.
But, but, um, the thing is, is that where where children go, our staff need to go.
Right, right.
And so where, right now, we have, we've become pretty efficient at being able to staff our our classrooms at at those ratios.
Right.
So with that, um, when students move from, let's say, you know, Frank, let's say it's Franklin Elementary School and twenty-five students move into E-Academy, for example, that's not necessarily gonna reduce the class sizes. We have to reorganize because if the students move over here, a teacher has to move with them.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Right? So so it's still, even though students have moved into E-Academy, that virtual classroom over here, a teacher needs to go with them, and the rest of the class sizes are adjusted back to that one to eighteen for AGR, one to twenty-two, one to twenty-four, one to twenty-seven in order to accommodate that, 'cause we go, we go where the kids are.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Fox, how do you, what do you think are average sizes for our K through five class sizes across the district? I know some are really small, some are bigger. The newer schools, Oaklawn, and the addition to Lakeside, I know those classrooms are larger than some of the older ones. And then Shapiro is open concept, so just the average class size, the four-walled classroom?
Right, that's a difficult question to answer. Uh, it does vary widely, as as you had indicated. Uh, I would say we we probably range from about seven hundred and fifty square feet to approximately nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
Uh, we do have some very large classrooms, uh, in certain schools that are are designed to be more flexible.
Right.
I would say if, on average, across the entire district in a K-five, you may be in that eight hundred to eight hundred and twenty-five square foot range.
The reason why I'm bringing that up is because the concern in mind is we're taking children who have a difficult time keeping their hands to themselves or covering their mouths or so on and so forth, or keeping their masks on their face. We're putting them in a seven hundred or a nine hundred square foot room, twenty of them on average with a teacher, for seven hours. And then they're gonna be doing art in that room, gym in that room, everything in that room. And I I understand, and I I've got a lot of feedback about, well, teachers are essential workers. They absolutely are. They're probably the essential worker for our communities. But what I don't understand and what I have a difficult time with is when people compare teachers and educators um, to your your workforce out there that, um, people have have made comments that this is what a lot of businesses are dealing with. I have searched, I have asked, I have tried to do research, I have wandered around. I don't know any business in Oshkosh or around the area that is putting twenty-five people in a seven hundred square foot room for seven hours. No one is doing that. I have not seen that yet. I have lots of friends who own businesses. I have lots of friends who work in manufacturing. I have lots of friends who work in government. I have friends, I acquaintances, friends, and nobody's doing that. You know, they're they're, and so that's where I have a hard time, particularly with the elementary level, putting them in that confined space for seven hours. Um, another question I had was, when, when Dr. Jones and then, um, Matt, wherever, oh, hi, Matt. When you guys were discussing, um, these committees that were made, none of the, um, I was wondering if any nurses or doctors were on any of these committees? Because when you were thanking people and even on the slideshow, there didn't seem to be any nurses or doctors on there. I'm wondering if anybody talked to Aurora or Mercy because of the protocols that we're putting into place when a child has two symptoms and we're sending them home and then they have to get, um, tested? Do they, does Aurora and Mercy, do they have the means to be testing students when we have close to ten thousand students in our district? Do they have the means to do those testings? And have they given us any feedback about how many tests can they do? When can we get that feedback? Um, where can students go? Where can teachers go? Um, is our Three Waves Clinic helping with that? You know, where's that coming from? Has any doctors or nurses been involved in any of those decisions? I know the Health Department has, but I'm particularly, um, you know, we don't go to the Health Department for the test and we go to the clinics, so I'm wondering where, if anybody's talked to them.
Outside of our school nurses, there were no healthcare professionals on the committees.
Okay.
It was all district staff. Um, and I honestly don't know your question about the capacity of of our healthcare facilities. Um, I don't know if Doug or Julia have a better idea of what that is, but, um, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I can address some of that, and I just wanna emphasize again, so on each of the committees, we did have our school nurses. We're participating with that.
Okay, good.
And in fact, um, some of our school nurses have been working with the County Health Department as contact tracers.
Oh, good, okay.
So they've been getting some some additional conversations and and, as you might say. And I'm gonna, if I may ask, for one of you to come up, um, only because we also, um, participate in a weekly call, um, actually several weekly calls. I personally co- um, participate in a Fox Valley Superintendent's Call where each of the county health departments are on that call, as well as Theta Care. And Theta Care, um, they have customized the report for the Fox Valley, uh, region, so it's only the Theta Cares within our area.
Okay.
Um, and they give us information on a weekly basis as to what things are looking like, what can we anticipate? Um, we've had, uh, superintendents, we've had conversations, and I'm just gonna ask Doug, 'cause I know he can, he can verify. We've had very blunt conversations where we're, where we're saying, okay, we know we can't, we know we can't do the six-foot social distancing at some of our our grade levels. Talk us through this. What are some of your recommendations on how we can handle this? Um, so we've been actively seeking input from them, and it just, that's one call.
Okay.
Then we also participate, um, on a weekly call, uh, so for, and it's usually on Wednesdays. Um, well, it, now it's every other week, but within the Oshkosh area. Um, so it has all of your major leaders. So for example, Doug is on that call, um, our fire marshal's on that call, our chief of police is on that call, city manager a lot of times is on that call, I'm on that call for the district. Um, so you get, UWO, the chancellor's on the call. So you get your major leaders and we talk things through. It also includes from Aurora as well as, um, you know, like John Newman and Mercy Hospital in order to talk about, or it was capacity, what is it looking like, how are we doing, those those type of things.
Okay, good.
As to the question you had related to testing, that's where I have to lean on you, Doug, just a little bit, 'cause I can't recall that information off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm, testing remains a bit of a challenge in in the Fox Valley area in terms of, um, quantity of tests that that are available. Um, we're working with the healthcare system to try to shore that up over time. Um, the reason the National Guard is here is, um, because we asked for, um, you know, additional testing, uh, within the community. This was a a relatively quick way to to get a little additional testing in the community, but we're continuing to explore, um, as more labs come on. Um, and as we, uh, have access to more funding, uh, we're looking at additional ways to bring more testing in. Um, you know, we always keep a a reserve number of of test kits at the Health Department so that we can deploy those very rapidly if necessary. Um, and, you know, we wouldn't necessarily, um, see a need to, uh, you know, to be testing hundreds of of students or anything like that at any given time. We certainly wanna have the resources available to, uh, to respond if we feel that there is potentially an outbreak unfolding, um, so that we can, um, you know, do that fairly quickly. But, um, you know, timing of testing is also important, so there's a a number of factors that that we should consider, you know, before we, you know, uh, do any kind of blanket testing or make recommendations to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so that is another concern of mine, obviously, is is when these children come and the protocol goes and and they are, they have two or three symptoms. Um, are the parents ready to have their children home, quarantined for ten days? 'Cause that's what's, you know, they're gonna go home and then have to go through and and have other, you know, their families and their parents and everyone else, um, be exposed and how, you know, just how, I mean, we've all heard how that, you know, how that line goes with those and how that starts to happen. Um, I just feel that, I mean, I've got so many notes and they're all over. Um, I'm trying to make sure that I hit all of them. And, um, another one of my concern, uh, uh, from what someone said here tonight, the achievement gap, when we talked about that and that it will get bigger, um, with doing this. So I guess what I'm, I feel like all we're going to do is manage change. We're gonna constantly be changing, so we're just gonna be managing the change of going to school, not going back, going back to school, and that's good, and we've got some great plans in place. But with managing that change, realistically, if our ki- and we're watching kids in the Souths go back to school and they're having to close schools, so if we're going back to school in person, I would love to take a survey of everybody in this room of how how long you think we're gonna be in school before we're gonna go online. Is it worth to do that? Or is it worth to start virtually and phase in to going back, you know, in person? Give us more time. See what other other school districts are doing. I went through the top twenty-five school districts in Wisconsin, the top, um, uh, size-wise. We're number eleven, so I thought the top twenty-five would be a really good start 'cause we're smack dab in the middle. And they, and I went through every single one of them and I read their plan, and I watched their school board meetings up until last night, until like midnight. Um, and all of, and it is literally split, uh, thirteen, twelve. Thirteen are virtual, twelve are in-person. It is literally split down the middle. You have the five schools before us that are all going in person and the five after us are all going online. You have, you know, but it was a consistency where they're gonna try for the first month, uh, virtually, and then they're gonna try to phase back in, or the opposite. They're gonna try to do virtual first month and then they're gonna, you know, probably, you know, they have a, right after they said we're gonna try virtually for a month, they have their plan on what happens when, or I mean, I'm so sorry, switch that. That we're gonna try to go pers- in person as long as we can and write the next sentence was, this is our virtual plan. So everybody's planning for that. So that's where I'm kind of lying back and forth with, obviously, there's no right or wrong. It's it's, and this is, and and Dr. Jones, you you absolutely said it. This has been turmoil for all of us, everybody, you know, in this room, teachers, administration, school board, Dr. Cartwright. Um, it actually, um, yeah, it's it's been, it's been pretty hard. I had some other few, just a few. Um, I just wanted to throw out some things that kind of stuck in my head from some of the emails that I got, and I need to apologize to every single student, parent, or teacher that emailed me that I did not get back to. There were a lot of them, up until ten minutes before this meeting with me out in the parking lot reading them, so I apologize that I didn't get back and say thank you.
We actually got one during the meeting too.
Yeah?
The one that just came in.
I I read them. I s- I did. Some of the things that, um, I wonder, as I was reading this and as I was going through this, especially as a parent, I'm hoping that all these parents did read, and I'm a parent, I've got two children in this district. I'm hoping that these parents did have the time to sit down and truly read through the, um, back-to-school plan. Because it goes in there all the protocols that have been put into place of what these students and the teachers have to do every day. students and the teachers have to do every day, and administration and these committees did a fantastic job. This thing is so thorough, it's amazing, it's great, I, thank you for it. But I also want to know if parents have read through that and saw the extent of this thing and the restrictions and the protocols and how often the cleaning is and what that classroom will look like. And that they can't six, they have to sit six feet away from each other, they have to go down the hallway one direction, they can't sit next to each other during lunch, they can't, when I told my kids that they were going back to school, they were excited. When I sat them down and said, this is what your school day would look like, both of their mouths dropped. They had no idea that this is what was entailed for them. So it needs to be done, we have to do that, obviously. So I'm wondering if parents who, who do want to get these kids back to school so bad, which I'm one of them, believe me, know what this all entails and how, how difficult and how, what the, what the strain is going to be on staff and students doing all these cleaning and having all these protocols and all these requirements in place. And I worry about that directly in response to their mental health, which Mrs. Gardner had, had made comments on. Will the mental health, and I know that Winnebago Health had made comments about this, that, you know, our, you know, certain aspects, suicide and substance abuse and those things are up. And when we, if we go back to school and these children are seeing each other, but they're not allowed to touch, they can't see each other's faces, they're not allowed to communicate, they're not allowed to sit together, they're not allowed to do certain things, will that be any better for their mental health? Where right now, some of these kids are home and they actually can do things and be in activities. If we go back to school and there's a, and we have a break, outbreak, then that stops friends from hanging out, that stops activities, it stops sports activities, it pulls them from all activities. So there is, I want to be clear that I believe that there is a balance between the two, that the mental health is bad regardless, you know, in both areas. And I did do research on that too, Allison, and I looked at it and I talked to some doctors and I, I did seek out a couple counselors that I know and I asked them about if they've had upticks with students and if they've, what they've been hearing and seeing also. And then the big one hit me today was, because I, I, up till an hour ago, I'm still back and forth, back and forth, because it is literally this, 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 you can go one thing and then the opposite for the other side and opposite for this side, it goes back and forth. But when the health department, he sat down and he said, the most important thing we need to be is flexible because we will see COVID in our schools. He literally just said that. That's kind of the bottom line for me, you know, it's, I don't, I, I, I really, I will be the first to say it, I do believe that we should probably go virtual for a little while and then take this amazing plan that we've all put in place and see what happens in a month and then revisit it. I just can't, I mean, it's, we don't know enough, nobody, we'll be one of the first schools go back to school and, you guys, I'm trying to hold it together, I have cried every day.
Kelly, I couldn't agree with you more, actually. I was, I've been, we are definitely on the same page with some of your concerns and some of my concerns as well. My biggest concern is the one that you mentioned, that we open schools and it's only a matter of time before we have to close them again. And somebody earlier mentioned the Green Bay superintendent and what he wrote about his decision last night and how, you know, he serves on the board, but his most important job is always being a father. And I, and I have two kids that are dying to go back to school. But when I look at all the effort that it's going to take to have especially the K through five safe, I almost feel like it's impossible to keep them safe. And what kind of quality of education are they going to have if they are in one room all day, they're not really interacting with other students? Our teachers are still at risk because even, they may or may not transfer it, I don't know. We're, we're not gonna let them play on the playground, is that correct?
No, no, no.
Oh, the playground, but they just go out with their only, they only go out with their one class, right?
It would be the one class or a maximum of two classes.
Right. And so, yeah, that's my concern, we're spending a lot of time and money for an opening that might just close a few days later. And I, I, I agree, if, if it is possible to start for a short period virtual and then revisit, that would be my preference. I know that 80% of parents want to go back to school.
I'm one of them.
I'm one of them also. But our job is not necessarily please the parents, but our job is to do what is best for students. And we always have to do what is best for students. And I worry that we open a school and a child gets COVID and dies. And we don't, we cannot say that that won't happen. We really can't because we don't know and we don't know a lot about this pandemic.
I do believe that the best, I'd like to finish.
Point of order.
I do have a point of order.
Questions are supposed to be directed through the, the board president. And it's very difficult in an atmosphere like this, as spread out as we are, when people just popcorn out there. So if you'd like to speak, it would really be helpful in order to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak, if you direct your interest to me.
Got it.
The board president. And Mrs. Gardner, I know is interested in speaking, I haven't spoken probably for an hour, which might be a good thing, but I've been waiting my turn because I never know who's going to pop in and how long you're going to speak. So in order to follow board policy, it would be really helpful if you would go through the board president, thank you.
Just a point of order, I think we're drifting off of the question period on the workshop. I think the discussion we're having now should be, we're discussing that.
I would agree, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you. Mrs. Gardner.
Well, I will switch my question to, to follow the presentation, so thanks Jim.
Thank you.
It's a good, good catch for all of us. One of the concerns that we talked about is we have these different models, so if we start in the way that it is recommended, and we do have to shift to virtual, we're gonna continue to do that until something happens, you know. That a lot of people are saying this is more like endemic, right, that this is going to be with us forever. We may or may not have a vaccine and when that happens, there's really no telling when we are gonna get the vaccine, right? We're not gonna be first, I know that. So we're looking at, like what you were saying, just being really good at switching back and forth, it sounds like. I just want to make sure that I understand that, that if we, let's just say we wait a month and then we go back, is there anything different in a month? And I don't know who's gonna answer that question, because it's kind of.
That's a good question.
So Ms. Gardner, the design, the, the plan that we're presenting to the board is one that, I'm sorry, Dr. Herzog.
Go right ahead, Dr. Cartwright, you're fine.
My apologies.
You're good.
Is, the, the design of it is to be fluid, to go in and out of different environments. We know, we, I shouldn't say we know, we, we suspect that there are going to be times where we, it's appropriate for us to be in person with modifications. There are gonna be times where we have to go virtual, there are gonna be times where at some point in time, hopefully we get to model one where it's the way it was. We do that now. For example, the influenza season, and if, if it's okay, I'd like to call Mr. Kammer up, because he can answer this one way more specific than I can. But we have situations where we have flu outbreaks or influenza outbreaks where we have to close a school or a classroom. I believe we had, in fact, we even experienced that this past year, if I'm, if my memory serves me well, Mr. Kammer?
I know there are pockets from year to year around flu season, I don't know if we've closed down a school.
I was thinking something had to do with Washington.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't recall closing the Washington down, but we.
Not the whole school, I think it was maybe a classroom.
Yeah, we've, we've come very close to, to closing schools in the past, you know, based on the, this illness surveillance log. And again, that's all done in conjunction with the health department and their recommendations.
If I may. So that, Ms. Gardner, so that's why we say, your, your point being is, is we, we know that, we don't know how lo, how much longer this is going to be in effect. We, we do know that a lot of our students have needs.
That's my second point.
And so that's some, that's something that we seriously took into consideration when we made this recommendation to the board. There are situations, for example, I'll, I'll throw out just a few examples. There are students who may be in home environments that are not conducive for learning or may be in environments to where school gives them a, a better environment to, for their own growth, development, and safety. We are first reporters, are first-line reporters, you know, if we suspect something is happening at home, seeing the student is how we oftentimes are able to make that determination. It's extremely difficult to do that in a virtual environment. I'm not saying impossible, I'm just saying it's very difficult. We also recognized that for many of our parents, they have to work. And when we talk about equity and we talk about what's the right thing for our children, we also recognize that we will be, there will be some children that will be, or some families that will be put into the position to where they're making decisions as to whether or not to go to work or to, and, and feed the family or to provide proper supervision for our little ones. And those, those are the ones that we're, we were mostly concerned about because secondary students oftentimes are developmentally appropriate to where they can be home by themselves. Other things that were taken into consideration again is who is with the child when they should be having that learning experience. We have wonderful staff members and they really go out of their way to work with our students and to bring them along, and we saw that happening this past spring and we know we have dedicated educators, I don't want to take away from that. But we also, again, as I mentioned before, those, the, the parents who have the ability to have either caregivers or themselves or someone that's with the child oftentimes will ensure that the work gets done, whereas, whereas children who may not have that type of support system at home, not because it's the fault of the parents, though I don't want to point that way either, they struggle the most. And so when that starts happening is when, again, you start seeing where we already have some gaps between our higher socioeconomic families and our lower socioeconomic families, it only gets wider. So it's with all of those combinations and considerations as to why we made, made it and to, again, answer your question specifically, yes, we know there's gonna be times when we're gonna be in person, we know there's gonna be times when we're gonna have to be virtual. The goal always is trying to, when it's safe and we have the ability to provide as many safety precautions as reasonably possible, then we're trying to have our students back in person. So a lot of it is going to be having those very tough and difficult conversations with our students to help them understand, this is gonna be a fluid situation. And I wish we weren't in that situation, I really wish we weren't. But again, to answer your question, the model is built to be fluid. Because until we get resolution on this.
This is our future.
That's what we have for right now.
All right, thank you.
I, I hope I answered that for you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Are there any other questions or comments on the staff report?
Can Bob hear us?
I'm sorry?
Can Bob hear us?
Bob can hear us.
Oh, okay.
I would like to hear from Dr. Herzog on her questions.
Actually, in the, in the spirit of openness and transparency, we received a legal opinion just before the beginning of this meeting. Because Mr. Peschel's wife is, has recently signed a contract with the school district, he has not participated, nor would he be involved in the voting because he would be engaging in a conflict of interest. So I know that he is actively listening and participating in that way, but the legal opinion based on the state attorney, the general, state attorney general's opinion of some years ago would preclude his participation in this tonight.
Dr. Herzog, I believe Ms. LaJie had her hand raised, only because I know it's, I know it's difficult to see.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. LaJie.
I just had one final question, like Ms. Olmstead, I had pages and documents and actually you asked one of the questions I wanted to get to, but I trusted that my questions would be asked by others, so I tried to limit myself, but. And Model Two, it says that the, we kind of talked about this, the instruction looks and feels normal. But reading through the document, the handbook, I get the impression that in Model Two, instruction will actually use technology a lot more, is that correct? That even when kids are at school, they will be doing a lot of their learning and their even group work online?
Right, so we have plans in place because we are, we want this to be fluid, we want our, want our children and our staff to be ready. When we are face-to-face with students, we are gonna be using strategies, we are gonna be modeling how to use the technology, the apps, the different pieces, while we are face-to-face with students so that they, they learn how to do that. So for example, K through two, we will be one-to-one for the first time with them. And so with the littles, we're really going to have to practice those things, how do you, how do you log in, how do you do those things so that when it comes to a point when we do move into Model Four, we have that, they have the opportunity and they've already understand the routines and how to access their learning and where is the content, where is my teacher, how am I going to do this, while they are face-to-face? So we are gonna le, we are gonna leverage technology.
Yes, thank you. I just will make sure really quick that I really did ask all my questions, because I don't want to keep hopping back in, or I should say that either I or someone else asked all my questions. I guess the, the one final question I have is about specials, specifically music at the elementary level. I know in the plan, it talks a lot about sanitizing things and if students are sharing instruments and materials from class to class and the specialist teacher is literally physically probably taking a cart from class to class with the materials, is that sanitation really going to happen? And perhaps there's a second part of that question, would go to the health department. So I wonder too how necessary the sanitation really is, because I understand the virus is more airborne. I don't, I just, I have some lingering questions, I guess, about specialists, so I want to hear some more details about that.
So I, I can tell you from like a, a general music perspective, we're going to have to think differently about music, and so I, I'm going to predict that getting out the recorders for the elementary students to do, like, we're probably not going to do that, we're gonna save that for a different time. But that doesn't mean that music can't be created and we can't be learning in different ways, rather than actually like using what we would consider like classroom instruments or those types of things. So we have some pretty smart educators that have, actually brilliant educators that have been thinking about this, K through 12, of what music is going to look like, what art is gonna look like, because we really want to be interacting in, in, in teaching and learning with our children, right? We want to be doing those things, we know it's gonna have to look different.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, if you have any input on the importance of when students share materials, I'd love to hear it.
I'm, I'm clearly in a situation of music where, you know, you have wind instruments or, you know, there's singing going on, you're gonna have to make some special accommodations for that, but in terms of, you know, materials being, you know, handed, you know, used from class period to class period, I mean, you know, we do recommend a basic disinfection, it's even more important if, you know, for students to understand that they, they shouldn't be sharing, you know, eating utensils and things like that, I would caution that a little bit higher. you know, eating utensils and things like that. I would caution that a little bit higher. But you're right. I mean, it doesn't appear that, you know, that fumites, you know, or surfaces, viruses on surfaces is a primary driver of spread. But it's still, it shouldn't be ignored.
Right. It's always good to be clean. Yeah. As I said it, I thought, I know I want to practice good hygiene, but the severity of it seems like the air is more dangerous than the surfaces. Is, would singing outside, if kids were far apart and they sing outside, I don't know, is that still?
Distance would be great outside. Yeah. I mean, you know, we've seen, you know, from the studies, some pretty significant transmission indoors with any kind, with coral groups where someone's infected. But yeah, I mean, if that's going to happen outside, it would be the best place.
And I think the same would be like for the gym, the physical education classes outdoors would do that too. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it and wanted some more details. I do believe that covers all of my questions, so I will be done for now. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut people off. This is a very, very, very significant topic. And I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask their questions and be heard on this staff report. I know, Mrs. Olmstead, you had lots of questions and I don't mean to cut you off either. So if there's anything you didn't get to ask, I'd certainly want to hear what you have to share.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. I don't, I think all my questions were asked and I think, I mean, they were, everybody knows how I feel. Well, actually, I did have one question quick and I think I forgot it and I was like, well, I don't need to ask it. But yeah, I don't remember it. I just thought of it when we were talking about material and cleaning. One of the main questions I had was that, and this was probably for Mr. Fox, is that I read through the handbooks and it said that, or the handbook, and it said that carpets need to be removed. Did we use anything? Are we using anything important over like at Shapiro? Because like everything's carpeted, you know, I mean, like some of those schools that have carpeting? How are we, I'm sure everybody's got an idea of how we're going to use that space to keep it, you know, sanity, you know, sanitized. But I had three parents ask me that question. Like, if we can't have carpets in the rooms, but what about the schools that have carpeting in their classrooms? How are we keeping, are we not using those classrooms? You know, what are we doing with those?
Ms. Olmstead, if, FMA, and then for Mr. Fox to supplement, if that's okay. Originally, when we were looking at that, that was something that we were looking to do. And where the carpeting can be easily removed, that is our recommendation. But we also recognize that there are some carpets that can't.
Okay.
And so that is part of procedures that are, we will be working with our staff on in order to establish. So for example, if students are going to be sitting on the carpet, they have an assigned spot. And that is their designated spot.
Okay, I got you.
That way, it takes away from there. The other thing that we are going to be highly, highly emphasizing is soft items. Because as teachers, we love bringing stuff in a lot of times from home. You know, we want to, we want to make, we want to make it fun, learning fun. But for soft items, they need to go home and go back home as much as possible. And if it's okay with you, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fox to supplement anything I may have missed.
No, I think that's pretty well covered. Thank you. Really soft, soft items in general are very difficult for us to, with any type of certainty, ensure that we're disinfecting properly. Whereas hard surfaces, we can provide that certainty. So to the best of our ability, we want to discourage the use of carpets. Now, clearly, there are rooms that are carpeted. You know, we will clean them as we typically do, but they're not going to receive any type of special treatment.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Well, another question I have is, if we all recall, we voted on getting health assistants so that we had a health assistant at every school. Will we start the year with having a health assistant at every school then?
I'll ask Mr. Kammer to come up and address that. Thank you.
I was just going back through some of the other stuff that we were looking at, some of the, that we wanted to do. So just wondering where that was at.
So our goal is still to have a health assistant in every school to start the year. However, the candidate pool has been pretty shallow at this point. We had interviews last week and were able to secure an additional health assistant, but that same week, we had another one resign. So we're back to where we started. That position was recently posted. We still haven't received many applicants, so I don't know if we're going to be able to accomplish that or not, to tell you the truth.
So how would that committee work if we don't have a health assistant at every school? Do you, who would man the isolation room and take temperature? I mean, is there, how does that work then?
Right. So we still have seven...
And thus I'm misunderstanding the protocol, the thing. I'm so sorry.
Right. So we do want a health professional in every one of our buildings. So we do have seven school nurses.
Right.
And they would have to figure out a way to manage their school pod. So we are still able to accomplish that. Now, that may mean that our nurses may have to leave one school to go to another school to do assessments or to help out, which would, you know, essentially create a vacancy in that building for a short time. But there may be a way to do it where we would have a health assistant travel over to that school during the time the nurse isn't there. So we may have to get creative with how we do certain things. And in terms of the isolation rooms and monitoring the isolation rooms, it doesn't necessarily have to be a health assistant that is monitoring the isolation rooms.
Okay.
So in the document, we reference the internal response team. And it could be an internal response team member that is essentially monitoring the room, just keeping an eye on the student through a window to make sure they continue to be okay until the parent arrives. So we may have to utilize individuals a little bit differently and there would be training involved with that. But you are correct in that the ideal situation would be that we are able to have a health assistant in every building.
And with all these questions, I hope that the team, and everybody knows me well enough, that I do not mean any disrespect or harm or judgment. I am just asking as a board member, as a parent, I do not mean, you know. So that's another concern of mine is as a parent and as a board member, that I'm sending kids back to school. We don't have a trained health assistant or nurse at every single one of these schools during a pandemic. That's kind of, that's a little scary. And it's no fault of our own. It's like you said, there's no, we have seven nurses for 10,000 students during a pandemic with some health assistants. That's kind of, you know, that's hard to, that's hard to digest as a parent. Thanks, Matt. I appreciate it.
Ms. Olmstead, just for clarification, if I may, Mr. Kammer, how many nurses do we have? And how many health assistants do we have?
So we currently have seven school nurses. And our health assistance staff is currently at 16 with our recent resignation.
So what I'm saying is, is do we have, some of our schools are quite large. You know, and you have one health assistant, not even a nurse to some of these bigger schools. You know, my point is, is we are starting a pandemic, going back to school without having a health official at every school. That's, yeah. That's all. Thanks. All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Cartwright.
I was just going to supplement that. I know that Mr. Kammer's been, we've been having conversations about the understanding that there may be some areas where we currently have health assistants, but another school doesn't even have a health assistant to where we would do. But they, the first school has a nurse as well, that we may be looking at to do, you know, a temporary transfer.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that way, we have at least one health-type person in every building.
Because we have 23. So I got it. Okay. 20 schools. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all I had. Thank you, Dr. Herzog, for getting back to me. And I agree with everyone here that the best place, absolutely best place, is for these children to be in the classroom. That's where they learn the best. It's where they need to be, all of them, especially our children in need. So I guess I just worry that because I know no matter what decision I make, it's 50/50. It's one against the other. So I kind of worry, but...
Any other board members with a comment or a question? I just want to commend the administration and all of the staff members who participated in the development of these models. Like Mrs. Olmstead and the rest of the board members, we've all received quite a few emails. And like Mrs. Olmstead, I will also apologize, excuse me, for not answering each and every one. I have read each and every one, but I haven't had a chance to respond. I know that a couple of them noted that we didn't have a plan or they didn't think we had a plan. The plan was presented tonight. I would invite anyone to go to our website and take a look at the plan and also take a look at that 35, excuse me, 34-page handbook related to student and staff safety. Safety is our number one concern. The question for me is, how do we safely return roughly 10,000 students and over 1,000 staff members to our schools? That handbook, I think, is phenomenal. Like Mrs. Olmstead, I've looked at some of the plans on other district websites and I don't see the detail that I've seen in this one. So I commend the hours and hours of discussion and time that went into the development of the plan, the various models, and this handbook. So again, thank you to everyone who participated tonight and those who spoke tonight and those who have written to each of us and called us and stopped us in the grocery store or on the dog walk or wherever and provided feedback. It's all extremely important. This is an extremely important topic and one that I don't think any of us had any clue that we would be discussing in August of 2020 when we approached the 2019-2020 school year. So here we are. All right. If there are no other comments on this workshop item, then we will go on to the consent resolution. Is there anyone who wanted a final comment on the staff report? I really don't mean to cut anyone off. I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to share their voice. All right. Well, thank you to the central office staff who are here tonight and to the representatives from the county health department, Doug and Julia. We really appreciate your being here as well as Kobison, even though we didn't ask them any questions this evening. So thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull any of these items?
I'd like to pull number two, please.
Number two. Good choice. Anyone else? All right. Excuse me. The board will consider approval then of one, personnel. A, approval of appointment of an administrator. Three, E-Academy staff positions for Fall 2020, response to COVID-19. And four, plastic barriers and dividers.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
I believe he said aye, but he looks like he's muted.
Dr. Gardner?
Yeah, he's nodding.
He's nodding.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion, hear it.
Thank you very much. We will go back then to resolution two. Be it resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the Ashkosh Area School District 2020 to 2021 school year plan as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I can barely hear you, Mr. Peschel. Yes.
My event doesn't like working. But I'd like to make a very quick pre-statement and then prevent it from all of you guys continuing your conversation.
I don't know. Is that appropriate, given that this is a conflict of interest situation? I don't think it's appropriate, but I'm not an attorney.
I just want...
It's a conflict.
I speak for myself communicating.
I'm getting some nods that, from at least two other board members who don't feel it's appropriate for you to comment on this since it is a conflict of interest. Oh, okay. All right. That's appropriate. Absolutely. Yeah.
Is it appropriate?
To vote present. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Before, I was informed right before tonight's forum meeting that it was appropriate for me to vote present today due to the impact of my vice employment with the district. So I am self-serving guidance on that, but I'm going to accept the advice of legal and the wishing of the board to not vote for the very state itself. Thank you for this moment and I am actively listening to the decision taken today tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel. And I do apologize for the late legal opinion. But sometimes we don't have much choice about timing, so I do apologize. All right. We have a motion and a second then on resolution number two on the district's 2020 to 21 school year plan. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Carlin?
I again, just wanted to echo what the other board members have said, which is thank you to all the teachers that reached out to us, sharing their input and their feedback and all the parents. We did read those. This is a very difficult decision. We've all lost sleep over it. And there are no easy answers. And so although I have my reservations about parts of this plan, I do trust this board and I do trust the administration. And I value the work that they've done to get us here tonight. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that has put so much time into this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Loji, thank you.
Yes. So I want to ask a question and I apologize, I should have asked this before this moment. But in, meaning before the meeting, in being prepared, I just had so many things. So I want to make sure I understand what a yes vote means. So I greatly appreciate the plan that was put forward and I do support it. But I have reservations about starting the, as I stated earlier, the elementary school on Model Two. So if I vote yes, am I voting to start elementary on Model Two and middle and high school on Model Three? That's what I assumed coming in and that's what I was prepared for. But reading this, I just, the actual resolution, it doesn't say that you're voting on that difference. So I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Garner, thank you.
Yeah, I too want to acknowledge everybody that reached out to us. I personally really appreciate hearing from everybody. I like knowing what people are thinking and I can't know if you don't tell me. So I do appreciate it, even if I don't always agree with it. I always appreciate it. And what I did want to also acknowledge tonight, as I sat back and tried to decide what I was going to do tonight, it really comes down to, for me, that public education in this country is a conduit. And it is how our country has decided it's going to provide services to children. And whether or not we like it, that is the reality today. We give, we provide services, supports, and protective factors for children. It is not just about academic achievement. And so that's the struggle that I'm having because our schools are such critical infrastructure for our communities. I think that if we continue to keep our buildings closed to children, we're shutting off those supports and services to the families that really rely on us, specifically on the kids who are counting on us. So that's really where I'm sitting. I've heard a lot. Like everybody has said, there's no win-win. But this is the one thing that I really am grappling with. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans?
Emails for online learning. Emails for in-class learning. And as that board president, Green Bay, said, I agree with every point that was made in those emails.
Yes.
You're-- we're stuck between two bad choices. And-- I think, in response to Liz's question, I think partly what we're voting on is to put into effect what is going to be on that first week of school, because that could be completely different than what it is right now. And I think we're voting on-- we're not really voting on what particular model of operation we're going to do. We're kind of voting on a plan to deal with COVID-19, depending on where it takes us. And I think I fall back to-- the board hired a person to run the school system. And I think, for me, when I do that, I want to hire a person, and then step back and let them do their job. So-- as many fears as I have of what might be, I'm going to vote in favor of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Does anyone else wish to speak? This-- I want to speak. Yeah. This has been a-- a real challenge. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. I agree with what's come through the emails, the phone calls, the people I've encountered on the dog walks. There are a lot of competing interests here. There are a lot of variables over which we have no control. Probably the only constant here is change, and the fact that we will likely be moving among and between these models at some point. There was-- there was at least one email who-- where the writer made a comment about, "You're not thinking about children if you vote to have them go back to school." And I really reflected on that as a former teacher and administrator. And I-- I've wrestled with that. But like Mrs. Garner, I see public education as a great equalizer, and serving the common good for all children. It's-- we know we can do a great job when we have kids face-to-face in our schools, in our classrooms. The social and emotional learning was touched on by one of my neighbors who talked about the depression that her middle schooler suffers, and how she'd like her to be back in school so she can have access to the school counselor, or to the mental health professional. The social workers, who identify so many issues beyond academics that our children face on a daily basis. The EL students and the achievement gap that just seems to get wider. The parents of two special ed-- two students with special needs, who spoke to me about how important it is to have their children in school, and how one of them is just thriving going to summer school as a special education student last week, and I believe this week, and wants her five days a week, even though she'd be a middle schooler under this plan, and he wants her in school five days a week. Someone else talked with me about equity. And that resonated for me as well, because equity is one of our strategic goals. And the way it was phrased was something like this. "We have students who are at home without parents to assist them with homework, and the homework gap gets bigger. And it has nothing to do with the quality of the parent or the interests of the parent and their child. They just don't have the wherewithal to do that." Today, I heard from a parent whose child spent much of the spring semester with grandparents, trying to help her with homework, but she was falling farther and farther behind with her math. Grandparents aren't available this fall. So what are they going to do? I also listened in the emails in tonight of a disconnect that we have in the community. A disconnect between the parents, eighty-three to eighty-five percent of whom want their children in school, and the staff. And to hear staff members say, "I'm scared to death to go to school." That's frightening to me. Somehow, we have to bridge that disconnect. School has to feel safe. And I believe that that thirty-four-page handbook is a start. But I will support this resolution with the caveat that administration works with the teachers and those people who don't feel safe returning to school. We need them, and we need them to feel safe for their children, their own children, their own personal children, and the children before them in the classrooms. I know that the Appleton, Nina, the Manasha, and the Winnie County school districts have all adopted some sort of plan which is similar, in some ways, to ours, but not quite, because all 421 public school districts in the state have been on their own to create their own plans. But all of those plans call for some form of face-to-face learning. So maybe we can learn from those districts in terms of how they've bridged the gap or closed that disconnect between parents and staff in terms of wanting the children in school. And as Mrs. Carlin, so well put, we have no idea how long this plan, if it were implemented as written, will be in effect. It could be one day. It could be six weeks. It could be eight weeks. We don't know, because we are in this constant state of change. But at some point, we have to make a decision, and we have to do our very best to ensure the safety of everyone in our buildings. And so, I will be voting in the affirmative on this resolution. Any other comments? Mrs. Solaji?
So again, sorry to labor the point.
No, you're fine.
But I want to vote in affirmative for so much of this. But I don't think I can, in good conscience, vote to send our elementary students back five days a week for seven hours in a room. So that's where I'm trying to get the clarification. So in that case, I would have to vote "no," even though I do support so much of this. Right?
I believe so, but you could ask to split the question.
That's one thing that I wondered about, too. But the question-- that's why I brought this up. The question doesn't specify that middle school and high school would start on Model 3, and elementary school would start on Model 2. So I don't think I can vote for the part that I'm in favor of while voting "no" on the part that I'm not in favor of. I have to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think the correct terminology is-- you could ask to divide the motion. You could move to divide the question and separate out, for example, elementary from the 612, because I believe the-- I believe we're voting on the recommendation, are we not?
Yes.
As presented, with the elementary children going five days a week, and the 612 students following the AB-type schedule. Is that correct, Dr. Cartwright?
Clarification. So what you're actually voting on-- technically, yes, you could divide it, because there are two components to this, right? Ultimately, you are voting on the big plan that we are presenting to you.
Okay.
Included within that plan is the four models. E-Academy.
Okay.
And then, how we would start-- where-- based off the information we have today, how we would start school on September 1st. Which, as you know, if our situation drastically changes between now and September 1st, which you just never know, then it may be a different plan on what we're starting with on September 1st. So I-- what I would-- I don't-- I think what you can do is modify the wording of the-- modify the wording, okay? In other words, you want to amend the motion to approve the Oshkosh Area School District school-year plan with the models presented, and have a separate conversation related to the recommend-- or you could just say, with the recommendation of how school starts on September 1st being blah, 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 blah.
That would make sense.
Okay. Thank you for being patient with me, everyone, as I try to learn these parliamentary motion guides and structures and rules. So that is going forward. Just to be transparent with everyone, that is what I would like to do.
Can I have the question read as it is now?
I'm sorry.
Can I have the motion read as it's written now?
Sure. As it's written now, it reads: "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Oshkosh Area School District 2020 to 21 school-year plan as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education."
And that would have to be amended, if you wanted to--
I think that makes more sense, right?
So we would need a motion to amend?
And a second.
First, you have to come up with the language that you wanted to amend with.
I'm sorry to cause so much trouble.
No, this is very important. We have to do our best to get it right.
May I make a recommendation based off what I'm hearing? I'm seeking clarification, Mrs. Solaji.
Yes.
What exactly-- what for-- for the beginning of school, what model are you thinking about for elementary school?
I could vote "yes" if both-- if all levels were Model 3. I cannot vote "yes" if elementary is Model 2, and middle school and high school are Model 3. That's just where I'm at.
If I can have a moment, I can work on that wording for you. Very grateful.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you. Does anyone else have any-- Any comments or questions?
To refresh my memory, the B-model with elementary schools was like the AB-model that's going to be implemented in the middle schools and high schools. Is that correct?
Steph, could you repeat your question? Because I think I have the same one.
Just for clarification, if we make the amendment, then we would be making the K-5 into the AB scenario like the middle schools and the high schools. Is that what we'd be changing it to?
I don't know what Mrs. Solaji is intending.
I-- if all of you-- and if I understand it, we need five votes, right? For something to pass?
To make an amendment. We're asking to make-- you're asking all of us to make an amendment to what is on-- what we're voting on.
Yeah. So thank you for clarifying that. So I'm asking all of you to vote on the AB day for elementary school.
So you're now saying I would amend it. She's going to give you the language. Somebody's going to say-- you're going to say, "I make the motion, read the thing." Somebody here has to second it. Once they second it, then we're going to vote.
And there's a chance no one will second it.
There is a chance that it will not pass, and we go back to the original.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We need like a whole word.
Actually, we can have debate on the amendment, so--
No debate?
Well, this-- my little chart says-- I moved to amend the motion by, and it says debate "yes."
Okay.
I don't know.
This is what the delegate assembly in Milwaukee for the state convention often is like.
Oh, really?
I'm almost there.
Thank you. Coming in, I really wasn't 100% sure how I would vote, but--
Me neither.
After thorough discussion, and--
I tried to come up with an answer in my head before I got here.
Right? And hearing all the answers that we had, this is just where I've landed, so.
What I'm trying to do is-- may-- do I have permission to explain?
You certainly do, Dr. Cartwright.
With pleasure.
By splitting this out-- because originally, the way in which the plan was, we were giving a recommendation on how to start school. But again, you ultimately were approving the plan, which gave us the fluidity in order to transition in the event something happens. You know, maybe we have a huge out-- yeah, uptick that occurs that now requires all of us to start virtual. So what I'm trying to do is give the right wording in here, so that way, it modifies what the recommendation is as of today as to how we would start school. So basically, it would be-- be it resolved that Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Oshkosh Area School District 2020 to 21 school-year plan with all school levels starting at Model 3, but allowing for flexibility between the models, given the situation at hand at the beginning of school. That way, if something turns sideways between now and the beginning of school-- or the other way, things go great between now and the beginning of the school, you're giving-- literally, you're giving me the authority to be able to make revisions if needed.
Yeah.
May I?
Yes.
I think what I heard Liz saying is that she wants-- she feels comfortable with the middle school plan and the high school plan being the AB days, and uncomfortable with the K-5 every day, all day. And I'm kind of in that camp as well, to be honest. And so I think the amendment would read something along the lines of vote for the-- approve the middle school and the high school AB proposal that's been recommended, and vote separately on a K-5 Option B.
That's what she wrote.
Basically, that's what--
Is that what she said?
Yes, because-- again, I want to go back to it. Ultimately, what you're doing-- big picture, the number-one priority. And then, there's a secondary, okay? The number-one priority is talking about the models that we have presented tonight, that gives us the ability to be fluid between those models, given the current health situation and the health of our community, and, you know, the-- those type of factors. Those things that we heard Doug talking about tonight, that he-- we're going to be working collaboratively with and making decisions, okay? That's the big overarching what we're coming to you to ask. In addition to that, given-- but the-- given the information that we know today, our initial recommendation on how to start school was Model 3, which is the AB day for secondary schools, and Model 2 for elementary schools. What I'm understanding is, is Mrs. Solaji is making a request. How do I word this? That where, no, I want all the schools to be in Model 3. So, big picture, again, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to push this, again, back to that primary focus of what we're asking for, which is the plan that gives us the fluidity to transition, but adjusts the recommendation so that all school levels are starting on Model 3, which is that AB day. But at the same time, not locking me into that as your superintendent. And the reason is, is because if you lock me into that, let's say something really bad happens, we get to the-- you know, it's after the second board meeting in August, and less-- and maybe I don't have enough time to call a special board meeting for y'all to change and allow me to go virtual, because you locked me in. So that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to-- I'm trying to key to that ultimate goal of, here's our plan with the different models, and we know it's going to be fluid. And those decisions are going to be made based off of the data that we're going to-- and the conversations that we're going to be having related to the risks-- and it truly is a risk level-- and related specifically to Oshkosh Area School District. But giving me that flexibility-- But giving me that, that flexibility, you know, to where, if I have to change, I can change based of what, on what the first day of school's going to look like. Does that make more sense?
Yes, and even after the weeks go on, if we see that at the elementary level and we get more information from the CDC that it really doesn't spread at that level, I'm not saying I'm never comfortable with Model 2, but right now, given the information we have at the elementary level, I'm not comfortable with Model 2.
I agree with you, Liz. My biggest question mark was the K through 5.
So, before we get into discussion, someone has to make the motion.
I have to make the motion.
I apologize, I just want to keep y'all on point.
Yes, no, I had that thought too. So I brought it up, so I suppose I should make the motion. I will make a motion to amend resolution 2. Then do I need to read what you wrote? Because I don't remember it all now from where it was.
Amend to approve the Oshkosh area school district 2020, 21 school year plan with all school levels starting with Model 3, but allowing for flexibility between the models given the situation at hand at the beginning of the school year.
Yes, so I will make a motion to amend resolution 2 of the Oshkosh area school district 2020, 21 school year plan. Sorry that I forgot it. Be the recommendation be amended for all schools starting on, I should write it down. Starting on option, Model 3. With the allowing for the school district to.
Flexibilities between the model given the situation at hand at the beginning of the school year.
Yes, flexibilities within the models, depending on the situation at hand at the beginning of the school year. Sorry, should have typed it and then read it.
And I would second that.
Is there a discussion?
I don't know, I kind of feel that the way it's originally written gives the power to do that on, for lack of a better word, on gain day conditions. First week in September is going to be drastically different than it is now. And I don't know if we need to add extra language into something that is built to function in an ever-changing.
I understand that. I wondered that myself as we discussed this, if it's just a moot point, because the administration still could decide to start on Model 2 September 1st, right?
But it's, it's, I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to recognize is, I need to, I need a little bit of direction as to the board's wishes as to how you would like for us to proceed at the beginning of school, given what the conditions are today.
Yes, so given that the conditions are what they are today, that's, I don't know about everyone else. Mine would be that everyone starts on Model 3.
My apologies, which may mean that those conditions, as they change, or may change, they may not change, may drive us to a different type of model.
Yes, I, yes, I understand that. Thank you.
I just, I just have a question. Directed to those of you who have been parents, because I've never had that privilege. If you're a parent of a five-year-old and a seven-year-old, and they're both assigned A-Day or they're both assigned B-Day, whatever, they're assigned the same day, would this model cause you some issues or problems as far as childcare then on the opposite days? I'm just trying to understand.
I think it potentially would, and I understand that risk, that what I'm saying may upset a lot of people in our community. But I, I just have to vote for what I think is best for our students. And I don't think it is best for our students to be in a 800 square foot space for seven hours a day with upwards of 24 other people.
Because in essence, you would be splitting each of the classes.
So then it would be closer to 12. And when I asked the county health department, the risk goes up as you add more people. And as you add more people, the social distancing of six feet gets more difficult. And especially given that two of our elementary schools have open concept space. I just, I wish it were a different situation, that all our facilities were new and spacious and had great ventilation, but it's just not.
I'm just trying to clarify, I'm not disagreeing.
No, I think you're right. I have a feeling that this will make a lot of parents mad. I think you're right. Sorry to interrupt you when you were clarifying.
You're fine, thanks, thanks. Dr. Cartwright?
Thank you, and I just want to do clarification real, real quick, just based off your, your comment, is please also remember that we are, we have, we have changed out our ventilation systems as, you know, as the filters and those type of things in order to account for, to minimize.
For the date of the school, yeah.
So, my apologies, thank you.
No, thank you. That is an important thing to note, that the age of the building, we have ventilation to adjust for that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? I guess we're ready to vote then. Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Uh, no.
Garner?
No.
Ruzak?
No.
Olstead?
No.
Peschel? Salagi?
Aye.
And for the record, Mr. Peschel voted present. I'm watching him. The noes have it, the motion is lost.
I'm sorry?
The noes have it, the motion is lost.
What was the vote?
Uh, we had two ayes and four noes.
All right, then we go back to the original motion unless anyone wants to amend, offer a different amendment. I'm giving it some think time here. Is there anyone who wanted to offer a different amendment for this resolution?
Just to see how fast Vicky can write one up.
Right, I'm giving, giving some think time.
So I want to ask a clarifying question, can I?
Sure.
Right now? Along Liz's, I know this is a two-part question, kind of, now we've kind of made it that way a little bit. I love the plan, I just want to hold off on the plan, and I want to go virtual. So do I vote, I'm, I vote no, because I want to vote yes for this plan and be fluid and open and be able to have this plan. It's an amazing plan, but I don't think we should start the school off this year with this plan. Does that make sense?
Then you would need to move, make an, make a motion in order to move, you're wanting to go to Model 4. So in essence, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approved the Oshkosh area school district 2020, 21 school year plan with all school levels starting with Model 4, but allowing for flexible, well, no, with all schools starting with Model 4 at the beginning of the school year, at the beginning of the school year, but again, allowing for the flexibility as time changes. Or you could say at the beginning of the school year for a month, you could designate.
Okay, then I'm doing that. I am modifying, I make, I move to amend the motion by having the resolution say that I would like to have all level schools start at Level, or Model 4, online virtual learning with the fluid for our district to switch back and forth between models throughout the school year. Yeah, no, is that good?
May I ask a clarifying question?
Please. Yes.
Clarifying question is how, do you have a time period designated that you would want the district to be virtual?
So most of the, all the studies that I, not studies, they weren't studies. All the, the other districts that I read that were going on virtual to start with, they were giving it a timeframe. I don't have enough information to do that as a timeframe, so I would, I don't, I don't know. I guess, do we do 30 days? Do we leave it up to administration? Do we, like, that is, that's, I, I, I guess I, I don't, I wish this resolution was a little bit, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the resolution as it is, you know, that we're setting it. So I would say, I would ask for a recommendation from administration, what we should, if we go virtual online. Has anybody discussed how long, that, if, when, when they discussed what our options were? And if anybody came and said that we should go online, was there a recommendation of how long we should stay online?
Well, I do know that the Sun Prairie District had such language, and they put a timeframe on their virtual beginning. It might have been 30 days, I'm not sure about that, 30 or 45 days. It might have been the first quarter.
I think most of them were the first 30 days or the first quarter, which puts us in making the decision by like October 12th. That's what, I, like every, the top, you know, I did, you know, Milwaukee, Madison, Kenosha, Green Bay, Racine, Appleton, I mean, I did them all. And it's all phasing, they have phases to go back in person, just like our models, they call them, most of them call them phases, we call them models. And most of everything I read was through the end of September and/or the first quarter, like a week or two before the first quarter, so that at the beginning of that quarter, we can go back to school. So what is the middle of our first quarter? Do I have that? Or not the middle, the beginning, I should say, of our first quarter.
No, it'd be September 1st.
My calendar doesn't have it up there.
You mean the end of our first quarter?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you mean the end of our first quarter?
No, the, yeah, what's the, I'm so sorry, yeah, maybe September 1st would be the beginning of the first quarter? I'm so sorry, yeah, what is the beginning of the second quarter?
It's usually around the end of October, I don't have the date.
So a lot of these school districts are saying that by October 12th, they would make a decision on what they planned on doing the second quarter, whether going back, which model we would use at that point. I just think that that gives us more time to see what is going to happen out there. And it gives more time for teachers to maybe get in their classrooms and, and, you know, and even teachers can teach from the classrooms virtually. I don't know what that looks like. But I would say either 30 days, you know, just September, or, you know, like, what timeframe would you guys need to shift from virtual to what would you guys want, you know? Like, I think that would have, really, I would leave that up to, to you guys and on, on how that moves, because I don't know how that all moves with the school.
That's a very difficult question to answer, because the reason we're making the recommendation that we're making to you tonight is based off the data that we have right now. And to be fluid between the different models is dependent upon what that data is.
So. It's dependent upon the what?
Is, is dependent upon what the data is. And so, the recommendation that we've made to you tonight was with, in support with the health department based off the data that we have today.
Right. Well, that's, it's not off the data we have today, because the, some data came through that children, and now the numbers are jumping up, that younger children are able to be asymptomatic and passing this.
I'm talking about Winnebago, I'm talking about Oshkosh area school district data and the Winnebago County Health data. So it's spread, and the rate of infection, a variety of different things. So it's based off what we know today. And again, even if, I'm just, I'm just saying this, let's say, the board were to approve what we've already, we proposed tonight, okay? With the recommendation we've given. If a week before schools, we're looking at and we see our cases go up significantly, which a lot of it is going to be so dependent upon community behavior. I cannot emphasize that enough. If our community is taking this seriously, is doing the proper precautions, is doing the social isolation, is not doing large mass gatherings.
Right, what our community is.
Then, well, if we take this, if we take that and we are able to maintain what we have right now, or even get better, then we would, we would, I would be making the, within conjunction with the health department's recommendations, the, the decision would be to start the way that we're proposing today. However, if we get a week before school starts and things have gone sideways, based off how you, we've written this resol, this resolution, then automatically, we would not have a choice. We would have to make modifications. It may be that elementary goes to A-B, it may be that we have to go, it, it may be that the high school risk group goes high, like way high. So now we have to put them on virtual, but we're still okay with elementary and middle.
Okay, I got you.
So it's really going to be, it's, I, I know people are tired of the word fluid, but it truly is fluid and it's dependent upon the data that's on there. So as you're asking, you're asking me a very difficult question, because you're asking me, how long would you go virtual? When based off the data that I have right now, today, which can change, we wouldn't, we would not normally be making that recommendation to go virtual.
Okay.
I hope that makes sense.
No, that helps, yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Carlin?
Food for thought, I'm not suggesting this or anything, but what Green Bay did is they said that they were going to be virtual until they show a steady decrease in the number of positive tests of 5% or less over a 14-day period. So they were very specific about their criteria for how long they want to be virtual.
Okay, who was that?
Green Bay, last night.
Oh, yes.
They voted to go 100% virtual until this criteria is met. So 5% or less over a 14-day period.
Okay.
Decline.
Can I, and just as an update, if I, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, our data for the last two weeks from the Department of Health for Winnebago County is for the last two weeks, we've been between 2 and 3% positivity.
And I asked the question today, what was our, what was our positivity rate? And it was three, I was, I was told it was three, around 3%.
Right, but at the same time, we're asking the National Guard to come in and give free testing for a couple of days because we don't have enough testing. I mean, there's, I mean, that was just said. So I, I would think that once those numbers start coming in, they're going to, we're going to have more testing. The numbers are going to be up, you know, yeah. So if I'm being asked to make a, a timeline, I will. I'll just say the first quarter then. If I, or the first month. If, if I don't like having this power, I don't think it's appropriate that I have this power right now, that I have to choose when we have to come back or when we look at it virtual, but I will do it. That's fine. So I would say, if any of you have an idea to help me out, that'd be awesome. Otherwise, I would say, let's come back in a month and look for it for the first quarter. So let's just do it through the end of just September, looking at coming back in person for the first quarter. Or second quarter, I keep saying that, I'm so sorry, for coming back in person at the second quarter or before the second quarter. So we'll just give it to the end of the month. I would be happy if any of administration would want to say anything, because I see a lot of head shaking over there and I see a lot of questions. I'd be happy to let any, can, they are allowed, are they allowed to talk right now or no? Because we're in the middle of a discussion. Can I ask questions from administration or no?
I think what we have to do is, we have to define what the amendment is, and then it needs, you know, the motion needs to be made. There needs to be a second on it before we can go into discussion on it.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, because I, I even kind of.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
I was trying to give you information to help inform your recommendation.
So you're right, yeah, my absolute.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I, I kind of have something written up, you'd like to hear it?
Please.
Okay.
And amend accordingly. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district start with Model 4 online virtual learning for the 2021 school year until the end of September, allowing for flexibility in the plan prior to the start of the school year.
May I modify? Yeah, absolutely. I would recommend that we, we start with the actual plan itself, since that, that is the primary, the primary focus. And then everything that you just said there, and, but taking out the flexibility piece, because we won't need it.
Right, thank you.
Was that what you were trying to get at, Kelly, where you wanted to go for the first semester?
Thank you.
But you wanted to, to, to stay online, you don't want it to switch back, right?
You wanted to, about Ruzak?
If the COVID cases drop way down, you still want to go online or online for that first semester? You don't want to, you want to reevaluate after the first semester?
So we have another, a special board meeting a week before school starts? And decide then, or let, you know?
Well, the way it's written now is. Well, the way it's written now is, we go to online learning, but they'd be able to switch if things were good. Because there's no switching if things are worse, because online is our, our worst.
And then who's measuring if it's better? Who's saying it's better? Would we have to give a metrics for that then? You know what I'm saying, like, if the way it's written, that we're going online virtually to start school, but if things are better, then we can start in person come September. But what's better? What are those numbers? Is that what you're?
It just sounded to me like you wanted to go online for the first
I do, yeah.
Clarification?
Yeah.
I, I believe you said the first third, that through the month of September.
Yes, through the month of September.
My apologies.
With no moving if things are better. After the month of September, then they go into the plan as it's written now.
Right.
Is that what you're?
Yeah. I mean, if we go to school for, if we're in, if we start virtual for the first two weeks and then our numbers are just phenomenal, then I say we call a special board meeting and, you know, have another resolution and put them back into school. That would be, I would love that. But, you know, I, I, I guess where my frustration is, is this resolution didn't give a lot of opportunity for us to change anything. It's, it's kind of all or nothing. And we, I want the plan, I like the plan, I want to start school virtually. And, but I like this plan and I want it to be able to be fluid and I want the administration to make their decisions as the, you know, with the board as the school year goes on, just like we did last spring when we closed the schools. But then it wasn't even our decision, because, you know, Governor Evers put that into play, but... So if we have to have a timeframe, then I say we go, you know, then, yeah, thirty days, I would say the end of September, because then that gives us, you know, quite a few weeks in October to get the kids back into school. And let's say we don't want to wait until the second quarter and we want to bring them back this first week in October, then we can do that too. Especially if we're trying to be fluid between the Chromebooks and what they're teaching in the classrooms. I guess I'm frustrated that there wasn't an option, because we, I mean, it was, it was very clear that we're gonna either go back to school virtually or we're gonna go back in person. And there was no, it's this difficult to get there. For me to make a resolution for this is frustrating for me, I'm sorry. So I made the amendment, I moved to amend the motion. Do I need to say it, or did you come up with a new one? Or the same one?
The same one, except for added the school year plan in there.
Could you, could you say it?
Want me to read it back to you?
Did you read it? Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District school year plan start with Model 4, online virtual learning for the 2020-21 until the end of September, allowing for flexibility in the plan prior to the start of the school year.
If I may? Be it resolved that Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the Oshkosh Area School District 2020-21 school year plan with all school levels starting at Model 4 for thirty days. That's it. In other words, after the thirty days, what we do is we go back into the plan.
Right.
And the different models depended upon the data that we have at that point in time.
I have a question?
Would we have wiggle? We need a second before we have discussion.
Okay.
Did you want a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
For discussion purposes?
We'll put a second on the motion?
Stephanie Carlin?
Thank you.
Now we can have discussion.
Okay, so my question would be, if, does, the thirty days, is that a hard thirty days? Like, miracle happens and COVID is gone? Could we still, are, are we held to that thirty days? We, could we bring them back earlier?
The way it's written, the thirty days is a hard thirty days.
It's a hard thirty days.
Unless the board comes back into another meeting and revises a prior decision, which the board does have the authority to do so.
Okay, so if we saw the numbers decline significantly, we could have a special meeting and then vote to adopt the new, or the, the, the other models?
The motion on the table is adopting all models. It's just specifying that we're gonna start on September 1st in a virtual environment for thirty days. So let's say hypothetically, September 15th comes, our numbers are really looking good, things are happening, then at that point in time, we would reconvene the board in order, and the board would have to approve that at this point in time, we're transitioning to,
Okay.
we're transitioning out of virtual into whatever it may be.
Great, thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Dr. Herzog?
Yes, Dr. Cartwright.
I apologize, I know Ms. Olmstead had asked a question related to staff and I told her we could not have that conversation.
Oh, alright.
I do know that Dr. Brown would like to address the board, if that's okay.
That would be great.
I would love it, absolutely.
Dr. Brown?
I'm sorry, I didn't see her hand.
I didn't hear that question either.
Alright, just one of the things, so when you're talking about the virtual K5, we can absolutely go virtual that first, first month. My concern, which I was looking over, is the EC and 4K program. They don't have devices and their entire curriculum is play-based and the whole social piece. And so that's something that we would have to consider, is the EC 4K program.
Okay.
And I think that would be one where we'd want to bring in Beth Shendel and get some input about what that would look like. So I just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about...
We're just doing K through 12 right now, we're not doing...
Yep, but I just wanted to make sure we had our EC 4K students in our head, because...
Right, because we're, we're not talking about 4K, we're talking about K through 12.
Okay, that's fine.
And that's what this, that's what the resolution is, no, this is 4K through 12?
No, she just wants you to be cognizant of it.
I just, I just wanted us to be cognizant of it.
Thank you.
So, yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, okay, got it.
As, as, as the motion is on the table, it's for the school district, so that would be all levels.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, that includes 4K then? Alright, just, just so...
And EC. Early childhood.
Yes, thank you, okay.
Okay, so if we have no curriculum for them, for them to go online, to go virtual, then how come that is nowhere in this model? Like, my four models, and then there's E-Academy. And this Model 4 says virtual learning, all learning takes place remotely, important. A classroom building or entire district may transition to Model 4 if needed to COVID-19 exposure. So if we have exposure, we can move to Model 4. But now, I'm hearing that we can't for students, certain students, so I'm so confused.
I want to be, I want to be very clear on that, we're not saying that we cannot. She's just advising you, to let you be aware that we do not have devices for EC and 4K for those grade levels. Therefore, a virtual environment is going to look very different for, for them compared to our other grade levels. So she's, she's letting you be aware of that and letting you know that...
But we went through that with them in the spring.
We would...
And we are, if we have a COVID exposure in Model 4 and we have to go to Model 4, they'd be in that same situation regardless.
That's correct, she's just, again, making sure that you are aware of that.
Thank you, okay.
This is Salaji.
So I guess this is a time for comment. I think that it's really important for our teachers and our students to get to know each other before we go to Model 4. I know I haven't been a teacher for ten years, so I don't pretend to be an expert in teaching and learning, but the relationships teachers have with their students is so important. And I worry that if we started all online, that there would be a barrier there. And I worry about some of the things Allison, and I know we all worry about the things Allison said. And I feel like it's important for our teachers, for our district to reconnect with our students that we haven't seen since the middle of March. So I just needed to say that, that's it, thanks.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last...
I just said that's all, I just, I just needed to say it.
Oh, that's fine, I just, I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear you. Anyone else? Mrs. Garner?
So, the way it stands right now, the plan, the original plan before the amendment was that you guys have the ability to change and switch and swap based on what you guys are talking about as an administrative team, with staff, as well as with the Department of Public Health, I'm sure doctors and nurses and all the other people. So I don't feel like there is a compelling reason to wait thirty days, because if something happens between now and September 1st, we're gonna change it anyways. So I'm gonna vote no on that, because you're already able to do what you need to do. I hope that makes sense.
Is there any further discussion on the amended motion and the second? So it would adopt the plan and have all students start virtually September 1st for thirty days? Is that correct? Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
I'm not sure I understand the vote right now. So, could you read it one more time, please?
Vicky has the one that I think we want to use.
Be it resolved, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the Oshkosh Area School District 2020-21 school year plan with all school levels starting with Model 4 for thirty days. Or until, through September.
Aye. Evans?
No.
Garner?
No.
Herzog?
No.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Salaji?
No.
The noes have it, and the motion is lost.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion, unless anyone wishes to offer still another amendment. I'm trying to give you space here and give you a good voice.
You're doing a great job, Dr. Herzog, thank you.
I'm trying. I'm wondering if we might want to consider dividing the question. That is, have a motion that would accept the, the plan. That would be one motion, and a separate motion would be, what are we doing on September 1st? What models are we recommending to start with on September 1st?
I think that's what we just did.
Mrs. Garner?
I wonder if that would then tie the hands of, of the team.
Oh, yeah.
So I think what we want is for them to have enough leeway to change if numbers move drastically in either direction.
Right.
So if we separate, I'm concerned then now they can't make a decision.
Got it, okay. So the current resolution, the original, is giving us leeway that, right now, we're planning on starting in person, but we can go virtual if numbers get bad.
Yes.
Right, okay. I got you, okay.
If conditions are like they are today, or better, then we would go into what it says. If conditions on September 1st are worse, then they would make adjustments to wherever they need to go.
Right.
To deal with the current situation. So it'd be kind of hard to figure out what we're gonna do on September 1st, because we don't know what the current situation's gonna be.
That's correct, but we also knew that we needed to make some type of recommendation to the board, and so we, based off the current information that we have today was our best recommendation at this point in time.
Call for the question on Resolution 2.
Okay, so now we're back to the original resolution and the second. Is there any further discussion? Oh, you called the question, so we have to go, alright. Please call the roll.
I think I need somebody to second that.
Second.
What are we, what are we doing right now?
Do we need a second for calling the question? I don't think so, do we?
I don't think you need a second to call the question.
Just remember, at, at the delegate's seminar, they always have two people do it, one person call for the question, and someone else would second it.
Okay, I, I think you're right, I think they do it there, but I don't, oh, let's see.
Just in case Ms. Carlin has given it a second.
Alright. So we're good.
What are we, what are we doing right now?
We're voting on the original motion.
Thank you, okay.
I stand corrected, no second is needed for calling the question.
No second is needed, okay, okay.
So we're voting on the original, okay.
Resolution, the plan.
Got it, thank you.
Start date. Okay, any other comments before we vote? Well, he called the question, so we gotta go, right? Alright, please call the roll.
Carlin? Aye. Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
No.
Heschel?
Present.
Salaji?
No.
The motion carries. The ayes have it.
Four two.
Four two.
Alright. This has been, this has been a challenge, and it's going to continue to be a challenge, but... I believe that our administration will work diligently with our students and staff to ensure that they feel safe and secure in the buildings and that they have the authority then to move among and between the models. Dr. Cartwright, is there anything else that you need from the board at this time?
I just want to say thank you to the board for the level of conversation, the level of consideration. And again, I want to emphasize that even the recommendation that we were making to you, just as each of you have expressed, was extraordinarily difficult for us to make that recommendation for you tonight, because we under, we fully understand where we are. And I, I just want to assure you again that we worked very, very closely with a lot of constituents, a lot of groups, very thankful for the Health Department, who did review the plan, approve the plan, based off the data that we had today, the models that we presented to you. And again, just to say, thank you very much. And I, I know this was extraordinarily difficult for you. And we have them, we know that this was difficult for you and we have the most, we have an immense amount of respect for every one of you, because it was a hard decision to make, and we know that. Because it was a hard decision for us to make, to make a recommendation to you. But it was very meticulously thought out. And so I just want to recognize that. I also want to, again, recognize my executive team, administrators, and all the individuals across this amazing organization that gave input on this, worked hard on this, countless hours, as well as our partnerships with our outside organizations and the number of hours that they have contributed as well. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright, and we know leadership starts at the top. And so I want to thank you as the leader. Mr. Evans pointed out, we hired you for various reasons to lead us. At that time that we hired you, two years ago, we had no idea we'd be sitting here with this kind of decision. We've certainly risen to the occasion and, and provided the leadership to move the district forward, so thank you for all of your work. And I want to just say how proud I am of this board. This... This, this has been a, an agonizing decision and I appreciate everyone's input and your, your thoughtful and reflective approach to trying to do what's right for our community, our students, our staff and our families, so thank you. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Well, we do have a meeting next week, so we'll be back here.
Is it here at Tupper?
I believe so.
Right, that's what we just.
At six o'clock. And there will be open forums, both agenda and non-agenda related items will be welcome, so we can look forward to that. We did announcements already unless anyone has a follow-up? No? No? All right, well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Motion carried. Have a good evening and a good week.